Thanks for the introduction. Council has also had a little... What is that? Can we keep writing? So, to each other. Do it here one more time. Just give you that. That's seen.
Okay. All right, we're -- council will come back from closed session. There is no report to action. We will now go into our study session.
Item 4A, received presentation. How measure Q's fat?
Item four A, receive presentation, how measure Q spending plan and stormwater program. Share.
Did you get a message or the one share?
Hmm.
So you do.
It's sharing on my screen.
Your ones?
Hmm, it's just the TV screens.
Lady, council members, I'm Haywan Rang, City Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director. The study session item for you tonight is the measure Q spending plan and stormwater program.
I'm sorry, can you put the mic closer? Or history.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Um, so tonight we have the studies, the study session item of worry tonight is the measure Q spending plan and stormwater program. Nick Kageras, Administrative Services Director and CFO, and I will be presenting. The agenda tonight includes the objective, stormwater program and the proposed spending plan for measure Q. Elements of the stormwater program presentation will include the purpose of the system, causes of the system not functioning ideally, current and future projects and efforts and the timeline and costs associated with it. The objective tonight is to receive a presentation on the stormwater program and the proposed plan for the first and second issuers, the general obligation bonds or functions. The measure. So let's dive into the stormwater program, which I'll be presenting tonight. The stormwater program consists of various elements, including the storm drain system, which is what we think of in the traditional sense of conveying stormwater as well as regulatory compliance. You'll see that these are interrelated. The storm drain system is designed to address certain sized storms. Some agencies may also have detention basins and pump station, but I will get into that. We don't have the conversations in the career. That we need to. The storm drain system also includes infrastructure like trash capture devices, environmental retention facilities that help to treat the stormwater before it enters the system. This helps to protect the waters of the ocean and bay. Like any system, there's a system of best practices for maintenance and repair system and such as streets, I'm sorry, the storm water division, clean strain events, make slather stairs and form street sweeping. There's also capital improvements which might install new infrastructure or replace and upsize the system. With regulatory compliance, there is ever increasing stringency. Currently, we're on municipal regional permit three and there's various discussions of municipal regional permit four. These touch on both capacity and quality. Regulated projects by developers have to solve bio retention. And these green infrastructure mandates are now transferred over to the city as well. So we do certain types of capital projects like street urban construction, that actually triggers a certain amount of bio retention that needs to be installed to meet the primary requirements. And so all of these needs are not unlike other water and sewer or other enterprise like water and sewer. The main difference is that unlike water and sewer, there wasn't the system of rate pairs. But with measure Q, that was directly passed by the residents of the agent or the city. This allows for us to catch up on repairs, address capacity issues and remain in compliance with regulation. If you determine what those are in the timeline, I think it'd be helpful to take a step back. So this shows an actual setting where you have brain call. A large portion of that would infiltrate someone flowing streams tributaries and there'd also be vapor transpiration and then some amount of surface flow. In the old paradigm, the mantra was to build pipes and make the stormwater disappear. But after the stormwater send it away, that means downstream typically. Certain amount would infiltrate, there'd be some interflow, but vast majority would flow into the pipes. There is some vapor transpiration. So what more recent regulations have aimed to do is more mimic the natural environment where there's more infiltration. So that means more green infrastructure, green area, chance for the stormwater to infiltrate, allow for vapor transpiration and hopefully reduce the amount of surface load thereby reduce the impact. So what are some causes of the storm system not functioning ideally? Well, currently we are experiencing heavier rainstorms. So if you just have a larger volume of water going through the system, it may just not be able to convey the capacity of the heavier storms. But also capacity to the pipe, if the pipe weren't sized for larger flows, you can experience flooding. Condition also factors into it. A deteriorating pipe, it's not able to do its job as well. And then we also have boundary conditions, but that means after you collect into the pipe, the water has to go somewhere. It leaves the system for us to be into the bay. And what I'd like to show with this map is how our storm system flows. So typically, there's a small portion that goes to the river, but the vast majority flows to the bay. The rainwater falls from the hills on the western portion of town, it flows downstream towards the east. We have system out, outfalls, walnut, pine, Angus and euphrora. Walnut and Angus have pump stations that flow into a channel that eventually flows easterly into the bay. And so you can see that with tidal influences, if that water is no longer able to flow easterly, you may actually have water flowing to the west. And if the water can't exit the system, then you don't have flooding occurring on the eastern portion of town, which is what we experienced. Well, complication matters to that is our agency jurisdictional boundary. And as you can see, some of these elements are maintained by others. So we have one shoreline maintaining the tide gate, which is at the top right, situated between South San Francisco and SFO. And then they have two pump stations, that walnut and Angus that convey the city's stormwater towards bay. Then we have Caltrans, their system of freeways, SFO and South San. So these are examples flooding that has occurred in the city. These are due to very high heavy rainfall, which was experienced around fourteen, or we have higher tides, you can't get some of that backwater that you can see. This is an example of where failing pipeline causes issues in the storm drain system. We have drainage vents or even groundwater infiltrating into the pipe. If you have cracks, what it can do is the water flows through the pipe. It'll start to draw the soil around the pipe. If you get enough of that, you create a cavity around the pipe and what you can have are sinkholes that then you can see on the surface. This is an example of a large sinkhole that happened with the large storm in twenty-two, twenty-three. This is at Church of the Highlands. It was in a parking lot, large size pipe. Pipe condition was saturated and it created a cavity that we had addressed in emergency situation. Not quite the same situation with the storm drain pipe, but if you have a lot of heavy storm and concentrated flows, you can also get landsliding. And the city does have open spaces throughout town. So how are we addressing the situation now? We do currently have a storm drain condition assessment that's underway due to the lack of funding prior. And this is before measure Q was passed, the council had approved this condition assessment. We really, really would like to get eyes on the system. We just have not had the resources to do that. And so that will take some time, about a year or so. It's not, the two hundred and three thousand will not be able to see the entire agency, but we hope to select those areas which we think are the greatest risk and the greatest benefit to get our eyes on. We do also, the operating budget for stormwater division have twenty-five thousand dollars annually to repair broken pipes. For capacity outfall issues, we recently, right here at the Regulation Aquatic Center, converted the concrete ditch into the more naturalized engineered channel, which is helpful. And then we have collaborations with one shoreline because as we saw in that previous map, we do rely on this multi-jurisdictional collaboration in order for our system to work. In terms of regulatory compliance, we're complying with the MRP citywide. It's not just works or, or this department or that. It really does actually affect multiple departments throughout the city. We also have obtained more than three billion dollars in grants for a regional stormwater capture project in I-280 grady. This is really to address water quality though, and will not provide the flooding for the eastern side of town, but it is really to meet our water quality requirements. And we will continue to collaborate with one watershed effort led by C. So upcoming, after the condition assessment has been performed, we are proposing to spend about five million dollars annually and we will return more accurate figures once we have eyes on the system and see what our needs are. In terms of capacity and outfall issues, we would like to update the storm drain master plan. That is one of our, as for this budget cycle. Is to update our, our master plan to really capture the multi-jurisdictional aspect of our storm drain system. We will try to also identify central projects that would introduce increasing filtration, detention, disintegration. But that's really the capacity part. If there's less going into the system, then that might be able to better mitigate the volume of water going through and being sent downstream. Continue our collaboration with one shoreline, continue compliance with MRP, bio retention projects. Also are proposed at the budget and continue partnership. So there are the potential actions. These would be smaller scale, but potentially have effects and we can look into that is to capture private runoff. There's legislation that homeowners need to capture more of their runoff, then less of that goes directly into the system. Maintaining more permeable surface on private property as well as funding those type of projects that will detain and infiltrate runoff on city property and funding projects provided by the legislature. So this is our measure Q roadmap. Proposed projects, as I indicated previously, what's shown on the left is our proposed projects for this upcoming fiscal year. The storm drain condition assessment is already funded. That will take about a year. Storm drain master plan, about five hundred thousand dollars, bio retention project, that's really to address the MRP and our capital requirements and regulatory requirements for bio retention, for green infrastructure, the one point eight million pipeline repaired near take one at a hundred thousand dollars. And then we are anticipating about one million dollars annually starting in fiscal year twenty-seven. On the right, we have a regional flood mitigating improvements and those are quite, quite a bit more. Those may include rehabilitation of Angus pump station, walnut pump station, tide gate improvements, and there may be other concepts such as more detention basins, grid widening, habitat enhancements, and all of that for some. So in terms of levitating project schedule, what's shown here is because the system is going through channels, it will trigger multiple permitting. And once we talk about fish and wildlife, are before regional board, we are talking a multi-year effort. And so currently, one shoreline have initiated the project planning. They will be developing and evaluating alternatives, selecting preferred projects in the long-term plan twenty-two, seven. Advancing the first project design environmental compliance current twenty-eight and goal is to have the first project in twenty-thirty. So this slide shows measure Q stormwater from first and second tranche. And I will be turning the next slide over to Nick Kageras, but I did want to show you the fiscal year twenty-six. That's a two point four million, I can describe, million dollars subsequently for condition cares. And that fiscal year thirty is the larger project for flood mitigating. And what I'm showing is the seven hundred thousand dollars is not actually the condition repair, but that's the various tranches on the versus. I can kind of over sue.
Thank, thank you. Some members, Nick Kageras, Administrative Services Director and Chief Financial Officer. When Haywan or when this is director, City Engineer Ritchie brought through in her presentation, it's sort of their lane of measure Q. So we've talked, we've had quite a bit of discussion or where there's been, there has been sort of a quite a bit of discussion about the payment management program. We had a discussion about the fire stations and now we're talking about the third eligible use of measure Q money, which is storm drains and stormwater. Just as a reminder, the voters approved measure Q, which provides a total bonding capacity of about one hundred two million dollars. The modeling that was done in preparation for the bonds issue and in preparation for the valid measure has three series of bonds, three different issuances or three tranches. The first would happen fiscal year twenty-six, thirty-four and a half million. And roughly five years later, another thirty-four and a half, and then five years later, a thirty-three million dollars issues. One of the key elements we talked about earlier this year, when we discussed the measure Q spending plan or the minimum measure Q spending plan is the requirement that we, once we issue the bonds, we substantially complete an eighty-five percent construction within five years of issuance. And so when we look at that, we have developed sort of, we developed and updated a model that we had presented to you. I believe it was in February, potentially March. On the third half of this chart, you have the bond proceeds or the funding sources. Initially, we did not have, we initially were focused on a shorter timeframe or two bond issuances, one in fiscal year twenty-six and one in fiscal year twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Basically breaking down that thirty-four and a half million into two different issuances. The reason for that was the, the, the confidence that we would be able to program and spend that money within five-year timeframe authorized or required by by bond, bonds. And so we do have a bit more new information now. We had at the last meeting, we had a discussion of the Central Community Foundation Grant for Fire Station fifty-two. And you'll see in here that we programmed fifteen million dollars roughly of this, of the community foundation grant for Station fifty-two, which you'll, which you'll see down there. In fiscal year thirty, you'll see another, so that's fifteen million from the Fire Station fifty-two and fiscal year twenty-six for planning and design and then construction. Let's do fiscal year twenty-nine, that'll be the initial construction cost. Then we issued the second tranche of bonds, used fifteen million of that for for for, to finish off the construction of the fire station. The payment management program, we talked a bit about, and as we'll go into the budget, the proposed recommend budget. There is an element of measure Q being restricted when these that are limited to streets, stormwater and fire stations. That creates an opportunity specifically with the Central Community Foundation Grant to, to put more money into the payment management program. And what you'll see here is the significant investment fiscal year twenty-six, next year thirteen, probably thirteen and a half million dollars. And over the span of the next five years, total investment payment management program, forty million. So again, we're talking about the final leg of measure Q eligible expenditures. And when Assistant Director or Deputy Director Ritchie mentioned is that there, the, the major construction that's possible with stormwater really requires multiple years, multiple permits, lots of work. And, and so you'll see that there's the initial funding for, for the stormwater program that then continues on through the future years with the major investment in the second tranche bonds that estimated here about twenty by two million. One thing that you want to highlight, if you just go back on this slide, is that the council, as you know, makes annual decisions. is that the council, as you know, makes annual decisions about spending and priorities. And when we approve, when we approve a project, typically staff will come to you. For example, with the fire station, we'll say it's a $30 million project. We have $15 million essentially in a commitment from the foundation. And then we would say that we want to earmark $15 million of the Measure Q bonds, tranche two for this project. So when we begin the project, we actually begin to start walking in future, specifically tranche of Measure Q money. But as of right now, particularly in the area of stormwater, we're not looking for, and actually in all of this, we're not looking, we're not seeking council authority for, for use of the first tranche for stormwater, Fire Station 52. We would be seeking authority for pavement management program. That was just in today's budget.
Leave with the funding available. I'll have to correct myself if I'm right. I don't remember off the top of my head what the numbers were. I believe we could see about 6,000 feet of pipe, but there's much, many more times of that throughout the city. And so we are working in collaboration with the stormwater division to see what are those areas that maybe they're experiencing that there's automatic issues. We definitely want to see the larger size cover. And so we'll, we'll watch a bit of that because there's also confined space concerns. And we are, we have brought on a consultant and they have a staff who does this type of activity routinely. And so, you know, get cameras in the smaller pipe, get eyes on the larger pipe, really. It was nice to be see the power of current condition areas.
Right, so we're kind of like peeking behind the curtain or looking at the pipe. We never know what we're seeing until you start seeing it. And the scariest ones are those that just, like we have seen. So I, we only have to make a decision and that we're going to go forward with the budget. And that budget will likely change. But I have confidence that at least we have this money now and that we'll have to adjust as we go forward. I've been, I think back from a Colton Creek advisory board meeting this morning and they're dealing with their expensive flooding concerns. And One Shoreline is there. I have met with them and went to the pump stations and looked at them. They don't have enough money to fix anything. And there's two of them. So they may, I don't think they have the money to fix one of them. But it's something to be aware of, that people think this is a good approach. The reality of this all is we don't have the money to fix everything. And this is $100 billion out of $1 billion of maintenance of unfunded projects, I'd say. Prioritizing and then going forward. We're lucky to have, we have some partners, thank you.
Any other questions? Some yourselves, very. Following up on Councilmember Medina's question about the $1 million. I think I share his concern that maybe it's not enough. And I'm wondering, what are the limiting factors that led us to that number? Is it that we just can't take on any more projects? Or is it that the money is allocated elsewhere? There are some, what's the limit?
Q and Councilmember Salazar, the, there are two limitations. First is, as Vice Mayor Medina mentioned, we have $102 million on a $1 billion unfunded cap. And so the question is all about priorities. And, you know, where do we want to prioritize this, this money? But the most important factor from my perspective is our ability to spend. Now, when we issue the bonds, the, we will list stormwater streets and fire stations. And we have the greatest flexibility to use each tranche, which would then give the flexibility when we set the budget in future years. But I think the key elements here are timing and, you know, one-tenth of the, one-tenth of the pie. We have generous support from the community to forward with that. But at what expense do we, where are the trade-offs? And that's, I don't think that we're prepared to make a recommendation of that.
You hit on a couple of things there that I was also considering. And I think from, sort of showing some progress on what the community has thoroughly prioritized. I was really hoping that we could have more of an impact center, right? And especially in reading some of the budget documentation, you talked about possibly going back out again and asking the problem yet again for more money. And I think where we are effectively able to demonstrate that we are responsible stewards of their money, we build on that trust and then we can't actually go back and ask for more of it. Lacking any visible progress, that becomes a harder ask. And sort of following up on that, even looking at the, at the schedule, you know, we're looking at five years out before we start a project. I'm assuming that's the start of a project, not completion of a project. Maybe it's a completion of a project. But, you know, we, we, what do we know? A lot of the deferred maintenance projects that are out there, we've uncovered over the years, we know they're there. What's preventing us from just saying we're going to prioritize these because we know they're there? And let's just start moving. Let's, you know, get some shovels to the ground and start addressing these that we already know.
I believe this storm drain condition assessment will allow us to gather as a regular recommendation in the next fiscal year is to, after we take a look at it. And, you know, I share your concerns as well that hasn't been updated, potentially since it's been constructed. And the way that we know that the problem is that there's an emergency that occurs. And so, you know, our, our hope is that we can look at the system and catch it before, if we're doing our jobs, we catch it before that happens. And there, so I, I believe in the next fiscal year, we'll be able to bring back more. But I think also within the constraints of how much funding we have, we want to make sure that we're also addressing the flooding issues as well, as well as the conditions and immediately awaiting the results of the condition assessment as well.
Okay, no, I understand. We definitely want to do the due diligence upfront. But I think it's, it's important to say also that we want to see progress as soon as possible. A lot of these projects are very important. They cause a lot of damage when these things fail. And not just our infrastructure, but potentially the private homes. They are dangerous. And so I'd love to see these move as quickly as we could, we didn't.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just piggyback a little bit on what council members have said as well as what the city engineer and the CFO have said. The most we can, can issue upfront would be about $34 million. That's the most we can pull from the bonds. We can't pull $50 million. That's not an option. So the $34 million is more or less our first cap. Second of all, I think what CFO was saying is the money is fungible, right? We're pulling the money out, we're kind of planning for it, saying a million a year. We don't know where it's going to be in a recent year. We don't know what that number is going to be. As the Vice Mayor pointed out, if we need more, we'll pull it from other sources or pull it away from streets and roads or pull it away from the fire station. It's going to be one of those. We will do what we need to do. And I think the third thing, and probably the hardest thing, is the, the things that have us talking here is you fix a condition uphill. It feels like you're doing something uphill for someone uphill, but it's really going to benefit someone downhill that it may not be felt, right? It's one of those things where you do this, but it's still flooding down here, but it's mitigating, it's heading towards the flooding. So I think, I think to the Councilmember Salazar's point is it might be hard to prove. Look what we've done. And if something doesn't fail, if we're used to things failing, we run in and fix it. If something doesn't fail, it's hard to brag about something that didn't fail. So I think we just have to be mindful of how do we show the results properly? And I think that's what struggle that Heywon is trying to articulate is if we can capture the thing before it fails, we've done our job. Now, the problem with that is people don't see that because it's all underground. So we hear you loud and clear, we need to show the results. And we had this very similar conversation across streets and roads. It was a very similar, we need to show that we can indeed pave streets and roads. I think the, the stormwater program will be similar. We're going to have to show, we understand the system and we're trying to address it. We will have failures still. It's a, the CFO just showed me $387 million in unfunded stormwater infrastructure. You know, 102 of that is, you know, how much of that is going to go to stormwater? It's not just the council wants $102. So anyway, I just thought that, that was very, thank you.
So all great comments. Remember, it's the reality we're facing and we struggle with as a council. From the 2014 storm drain master, what items that were recommended to be done? Did we finish them all? And so instead of perhaps, we can do two things at once. We could do an assessment, but have we looked, have we figured it all? Because if they were bad in 2014, they're only going to be worse in 2025. So help me understand, like, how we're going to try to balance that? Because if we're assessing things and we already know that we have a $3 million project, you know, somewhere, then maybe our focus should be on something that we already know that has already been identified, that has a relative still. So I was just trying to see where, where are we to 2014? And making sure that we don't start looking for other problems when it was already identified in 2014.
So the 2014 storm drain master plan focused on capacity. It did not look at the condition of the pipes. It really modeled how much water can go through the system. And the old mantra is make the pipe larger. I think what we're going to find is downstream, the water can't go away. You make the pipe larger, it's just going to fill the water faster. So it's not actually going to improve the situation. What's going to improve the situation are those? The pump stations, the tide gate, potentially even on Caltrans. There may be things that that can be done to increase that capacity so the water can actually leave the system. There may be some spot locations, I believe the storm drain master plan identified upstream that, you know, make this pipe side a little bit larger, that, that will help. And we'll have to collaborate that with, or cooperate that with Stormwater Division. I know that we're seeing that and even if the model is saying it, we're going to have to verify, is that where we want the money to be spent? If we wanted potentially to detain the water, that would have better, more impact. And so I think the 2014 master plan was a little bit more limited and just making the water exit through the older, older model. And so I think we're trying to take a bit of it. Looking at it, also not a lot of funding. And so partly out of the project, but I think the RAC one was done. And then maybe one other that I don't remember off the top of my head at this moment, but by and large, you know, the upsizing of the pipes, there was not funding for that. And to be honest, I don't think it would have actually improved some of that in flooding situation.
Thank you, thank you.
No more comments?
No speaker for you.
Questions? Again, thank you both. And we'll go ahead and conclude the study session and adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting, which will be held this evening at 10 o'clock right here. Special meeting in a few years.
Special meeting in a few years. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome for the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting, June 10, 2025. We're going to call the Board of Roche Office.
Councilmember Alvers.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martin Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. And for those who are able, you could join me in the House of Representatives. I would like to give the divide, the United States of America, the Intolerant Republic, which stands on condition in this hall to defeat justice. Now we'll move on to item or public comments for items on the agenda.
I have two speaker parts, one from the neighborhood and Nick Rackerhill. Please approach the podium.
And I'll give you a summary as a Latina woman neighbor and someone who calls San Bruno home. I'm standing here with a heavy heart and a wrong sense of values. Our community is living in fear, fear so proud of the dangers of ICE agents around our neighborhoods. Fear that continues to grow because our city has not taken clear steps to protect the people who are most vulnerable. Let me begin by acknowledging that we are the unceded, we are on the unceded ancestral lands of the Ray Maitush Aloni people. A truth that reminds us that this land was never freely given. And while many of us come from different backgrounds and histories, the truth is that nearly all of us are descendants of immigrants. Some reason, so many generations passed. Yet somehow, those of us with deep roots in this region are the ones most often treated like outsiders. This country has been shaped by people from all over the world, Irish, German, Italian, Korean, Filipino, Canadian, and the list goes on. And yet, not all the immigrant communities are treated the same. Latin communities are disproportionately targeted by immigration enforcement, not because of actions, but because of how we look, how we speak, and where we come from. That is a systemic injustice rooted in racial bias. I recognize that the city has added Know Your Rights information to the website. That's a step in the right direction, but it's only one step. Much more must be done to reach the people who are most vulnerable, people who may not have access to internet or use the internet, and who live in daily fear and silence. Families shouldn't be afraid to attend graduations, doctor's appointments, even immigration-related court hearings because their fear eyes might be waiting there. No one should have to weigh the risk of being separated from their children just to show up for a milestone or meet a legal obligation. That is the definition of living under threat and if her breaking. I urge this council to lead with courage and humanity. Firstly, commit to non-cooperation with ICE. Distribute Know Your Rights materials in multiple languages, in schools, libraries, and public spaces. Partner with trusted community organizations to host legal education events and outreach. Train city staff, especially law enforcement, to recognize and uphold the rights of all the residents regardless of immigration status. This is not just a political issue, it's a human issue. It's about protecting families and preserving dignity and ensuring that no one in San Bruno feels dissoluble. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to welcome the people who speak tonight. My name is Nick Rackerhill from District 4. I'm glad to see that you all scrambled together to put something on this table. I've been asking specifically Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Medina, to put Know Your Rights information on there. This is half-baked, minimal effort, and inexcusable. I've been asking you for months, for months, before all the protests happened, to put this information out there. And what did you say, Mayor Medina? Oh, it's happening in bigger cities. It's not happening around our area. So now we got protests in L.A., you have ICE raids in San Francisco. So it's down the road, are you going to wait until it's at our front door? We need more than words. And the Know Your Rights, it's not even the actual red card on there. What is that? We need policy. We need a plan of action. Take the sampling of a climate action plan and put that for immigrants and undocumented people in San Bruno. I would like to spend the rest of the two odd minutes to have some conversation and not just have you say the robotic, "Thank you for your comment." I want to hear what the city has to say. Take a stance. What you uploaded today wasn't taking a stance, that was providing resources. You need to take a stance. Thank you. Please, here's something besides, thank you for your comment.
Thank you for being here and for your comments. Next speaker, Chris.
Rich Fern, followed by Matt Jones. Please approach the podium.
City Councilwoman Mayor Medina. I've been here a few times before, and I just want to remember everybody. I can accept our press call, we're close. And I sent everybody on the council, I think, I have right here. Oh, what it was, the lighting, because I want to show community foundation meeting. We're talking with the lighting, and I just wanted to address two points. One, I was up at Crestmore today, it's going to be a lot of site work up there, and they're still doing what I've ready. Maybe you can ask staff possibly to find out projected time, maybe when not. But in general, property to the community and just start the project. The second thing, I did send it back to the center so you can see what it was. It basically cost $284,000 for six lights. This is from a qualified supplier. So that would be the six lights, that's just the cost for the lights, material costs only. You have that information, so maybe you can share that with the staff. Find out if they can get this bit, what is happening with the light, because our community foundation wants to... When it's a meeting, they have earmarked, maybe, what an impossible budget. And maybe you can ask staff to take care of it. So I just wanted to point it out today. Most wanted to issue that was great, so many people I stayed at that day. So it was great when we closed our Crestmore and we played our street season on the elementary fields, which was awesome for our community. I'm kind of dirty today, so I'm going with baseball, we have tournament coming up. So it's hilarious, it's the need of a... Do irrigation systems for... Thank you for your time tonight and your spark. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your volunteer, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fern, could you bring that? Because I don't see that in my...
I don't see it with staff, I mean, I think I saw it. Please.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Matt. I live in District 3, many have known me already. I wanted to give back on what my colleague Nick was saying. Both he and I did meet with the mayor earlier to talk about the very issue that is before us with the situation that's happening in L.A. with the ICE raids. And I just wanted to share this. You know, I think that we could do more as a city, much more. You know, I went to college and studied political science, and you graduate and people say, "What the heck do you know? You know, you're not prepared for a job." But guess what? I studied classes called authoritarian state. And what we learned was that a lot of other countries have gone through this very moment that we're going through right now in the United States. And I think we need to be aware of the historic moment that we're in. This isn't about Republican versus Democrat or whatever. It's about showing up for your neighbor and, you know, being united in a democracy where we show up for each other when someone needs something. That's why I spoke out in favor of ceasefire and aggrandizing that resolution because my Muslim neighbors and my Arab neighbors are my neighbors. And my immigrant neighbors are also my neighbors. I don't care whether you have a certain part or a document or whatever. My neighbor is my neighbor. And that's what I want. In a place that calls ourselves a city with a heart, I hope that we can rally around that and we can show up for each other when each of us has something that we need help with and lend a hand. That's, to me, what San Bruno should be all about. So I just wanted to say that what I thought was posted on the website today was a great start, but cannot be the beginning of a longer conversation. And the other thing that we need to add comment is the fact that we are experiencing a transition with our Chief of Police right now. And I had a chance to live in the city of Oakland when Chief Manhinder was the chief there. And I thought she did a great job in a very difficult situation, you know, in the summer of 2020. And I think, you know, we have that transition now. And my question to the new chief is, you know, with everything that's going on right now, you know, to make sure that he knows that he stands with the people. And if we were in a situation where we had, you know, an influx of military, that this is an important moment where we need police to come out and say, "We stand with the people, we will choose the people over the military, we will support local over a dictator, a person who's trying to take over and usurp power from the people." So I hope that that is an ongoing conversation too. And we have an opportunity to hear from the chief himself and have more of an ongoing dialogue to build that trust and make sure that there's value in that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
No, the speaker, Chris.
Oh, Congress Speaker?
Yes.
I have to stop this, but I didn't. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Um, you know, I came here because I wanted to say thank you for the paving of my street on Poplar um between Genesee and the Allen Schools where I live. And I came to this meeting a while ago and I was told, that's, you know, probably not gonna happen. And I was like, well, another thirty years. Anyway, it happened. It's so wonderful. I love it. Thank you very much. I mean, a lot of the streets are getting paved. It's fantastic. And I also have to add that I support my Filipino brothers and sisters and neighbors and my Palestinian brothers and sisters. I happen to be a Jewish American and uh there's not that many of us in San Bruno, frankly, but we Jews know what it's like to not really be wanted. You know, and to be oppressed and to be enslaved. And I think that um if we don't stand up now, when, when will? You know, so I, I support my brother in this. And, and thank you also, San Bruno, for doing the work to help get our city to be a more beautiful and hospitable place.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Seeing none. We'll move on to announcements and declarations. Item five. We have, to start, we have uh two proclamations. First one is uh recognizing June fifteenth to the twenty-first as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the city of San Bruno. And go right on. I'll just speak uh you whereas is because we brought it for your convenience. Whereas the Seminole County mosquito and vector control district collaborates with other agencies to safeguard the health and comfort of people in Seminole County through a science-based program, integrated vector management, and whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase public awareness, will encourage the public to take action preventing mosquito transmitted diseases, and will highlight the activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies for people to minimize mosquito-related health threats. Now, therefore, I rejoin Medina America City of San Bruno to hereby reclaim June fifteenth to the twenty-first as mosquito control awareness. Right, over.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we give her the proclamation. Unfortunately, she doesn't get it. I'm here tonight. Been fired a minute, but I'm so thankful for San Bruno's recognition and for me. Um, not so long ago, a hundred years or so ago, um mosquitoes were a really big issue. And then the creation of our district helped me do that. So that hopefully at this point, there's actually this actually about mosquitoes on the daily basis other than the two dozen of us that do it as our job. But as we go into the summer, I'd like to remind people to report by you mosquitoes. That can be very helpful for us to find where problems are coming from. And then also to report dead birds. I know there's a lot of dead birds in the news the past few months. We do not test for avian influenza, but we do test for West Nile virus in dead birds. And they can be a really good indicator for us that there's an issue in the area. So there's a dead bird hotline. You can just Google California dead bird reporting. You know, get there and they'll help redirect these so our staff can collect those and test them for West Nile virus. I'd also like to let everyone know that we're having an open house on Saturday, June twenty-first from eight to four P.M. That will be at our facilities in Burlingame on thirteen fifty-one Rollin Road. It's open to everyone. It's free. It's a family-friendly event. So we hope to see some or all of you there. And I have to answer any questions or if anyone has questions in the future, you can feel free to call or email us um without any concern.
Thank you so very much. And I have been to that house before and it is actually very impressive uh to go in there because you can't really see what's in there. See, you get inside, but it's amazing. So I encourage people, uh, if they have time to also make themselves available, I think they'll find it well worth it. Thank you. Next, we will have the next item, proclamation recognizing June twenty-second to the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as amateur radio week. And I know we have some of the folks here, so I'm gonna let them do more of the talking than me. Uh, so I'll read a couple of whereas. Whereas the American Radio Relay League serves as the National Association for Amateur Radio in the United States and promotes the annual amateur radio field day. And whereas the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club will participate in the ARRL Field Day on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at the Narita Plaza in San Bruno, demonstrating emergency communication capabilities and public outreach in a twenty-four hour nationwide exercise that's between the library and City Hall. And now, therefore, I rejoin Medina America City of San Bruno hereby meeting of June twenty-second to the twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five as amateur radio week in the city of San Bruno and encourage all residents to recognize the valuable contributions of San Bruno Amateur Radio Club and all licensed amateur radio operators in our community.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for uh the proclamation. Um, it is very important to us. We're a very small group of folks. Um, we strongly believe in what we do and why we do it. Um, my first one, I know we have to answer. Can you stand up for a second so we know? We have a great group of folks. Um, I think there are only, okay, the city's about forty thousand folks. So we only have about a hundred and thirty-four folks who are licensed in this city. Um, our goal is to get as many folks as we can involved in amateur radio. One, because I hope they'll enjoy it. Two, because I know that there'll be a event somewhere down the line that we will be called upon to help the city on an emergency. Um, I'm particularly thankful for the cooperation the city has given us over the years. Um, it's allowed us in the last couple of years to either license or teach over one hundred brand-new hands, um, which is, is, is been working. We want to continue doing that. Uh, we'll be teaching a class once again, probably in July. And we'll be demonstrating what we do on Narita Plaza, which again, thank you for the use in Narita Plaza. To showcase what we do, you know, the most of the council folks have in the past will drop by and say hello. We appreciated your presence and your support. Um, so I want one very simple to say thank you um for your help and a lot of us have served it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. All right, your fire chief. I just would be remiss if I didn't come up and say a few words about our amateur radio group here in San Bruno. Um, I've had the uh opportunity to work with them over the past five years. And uh if, if you're not sure about amateur radio and the purpose they serve, um, they have a, there's a social aspect, but there's also an urgency aspect to it as well that supports all of the city of San Bruno, including its police, fire, and the city purposes as well. And uh they provide a critical link of communications in case everything in our system is down to be able to talk to the county and other communities throughout the state of California. Um, all disasters are local where they start, and we know that specifically here in San Bruno for many events that we've had in the past. And we're working to really build up the relationship with the, the group. Uh, we recently did a, a small upgrade to the EOC and we made sure uh that they were supporting that effort. And the San Bruno Community Foundation also provided some equipment to be able to support our EOC in the city. Um, so the city of San Bruno is really their served agency. So I just wanted to again thank them for all their work and uh continue to support that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Now we'll move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routinely implemented and earlier council action may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. It will be a public comment period at the end of consent for council takes action. Um, there are two items. Uh, one is on item G. Councilmember Hamilton has let me know that he will be recused. So if we do not pull it, he can sit here uh and we'll just make it within the motion that he is recused on item G. I'm gonna ask for item H to be pulled and, I'm sorry, I. I apologize on I and have that come back at a later time. We've had from our MTC commissioner who says that there is a city manager's meeting on Thursday. This is gonna be discussed with MTC and there is other elements to it uh and what it was doing and changing. So to be safe and sorry, I'm gonna pull it. It's already checked with both the attorney and the city manager and it won't uh cause any uh disruption or bias. Not going on that tonight. Is anybody, is everybody okay with that for I? Okay, so, um, are there any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry to be advised that for in order to recuse, to state the reason why I have, why I have refused my item G. So I don't, I don't, I don't G. Um, which is uh uh related to the uh to the project, the housing project of Crestmore High School, that um in the, this particular item will uh discuss the zoning map, which affects the entire site and uh the five thousand-foot circle around my home, fifty-six, that site. So that's why I refuse front bias.
Thank you. Any public comments?
No other speaker, Chris.
Is there any action on consent with the notation of G? Uh, Mr. Hamilton is recused and I are not voting.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Now let's move on to public hearings. So now we're going to have quite a bit. Uh, so we'll do what we can to, to help staff and clerk. And uh go through it in very quick. So first item, please.
Item A, both public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution approving an increased rates for solid waste collection services provided by Recology San Bruno effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
So this is a public hearing. So this is the time and place to send the public hearing to consider an increase to solid waste collection service rates.
With the record shown that the notice of the hearing was given as required by.
Thank you. And now staff has to report on proposed solid waste collection.
Good evening, Anna Morales, Management Analyst with Public Works. And tonight I'm joined by Matt Lee, our Public Works Director behind me, and Kirsten Pinoki to my right from Recology San Bruno. And tonight we're going to be just uh presenting on the proposed solid waste rate adjustment for the upcoming twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year for Recology. So tonight's agenda, I'll be covering the objective. Kirsten will be covering the background and rate adjustment. And then I'll be covering the fiscal impact tonight's recommended action and uh will be all available to answer any questions that you may have. So the uh objective tonight is to hold a public hearing and to consider adoption of a resolution approving a two-point-eight-seven percent increase to solid waste rates uh effective July first. And I'll pass it over to Kirsten.
Thank you, Anna. So it's important to note that this is actually the first interim rate year adjustment for this new franchise agreement. So if you recall back in twenty twenty-two, our rate increase, our allowable rate increase was going to be about twenty-nine percent due to a fuel index. And at that time, instead of putting that through to the rate payers, we worked with the city of San Bruno on a new franchise agreement. And the other one was about a year or two out of the spiring. So our proposed rate adjustment this time is two-point-eight-seven percent. And that is including residential and all commercial end-of-year costs. So it is in the industry waste standard that all franchise agreements in the waste industry have some sort of rate increase, annual rate increase built into them. Our new rate increase this year is an interim rate year, which is CPI-based, and then next year will be a detailed rate year. So the way that it's um computed is a blend of a CPI inflation, inflation, inflation and disposal adjustment. So our thirty-two gallon proposed rate for July first, twenty twenty-five is forty-one eighty-five. Reminding everyone that that is all-inclusive of weekly service of garbage, recycling, and organics and two annual bulky item pickups for forty-one eighty-five per month. And another reminder to our residents is that there is still a sixteen gallon and a twenty gallon subscription option. The county average is forty-five seventy-seven. So you can see that we're, you know, almost ten percent below the average. So we're the seventh lowest of eighteen surrounding cities. Here's a graph to kind of, you know, give us a round of applause for being on the top half, which is actually the good half. Um, that we are usually right in the middle, but we've kind of screwed it up and we're on the lower half of the industry average. Another graph is to kind of show the historical rate changes. The gray boxes are when we had detailed rate years. The blue are the interim, which is what we are in right now. And those three larger ones are actually the new franchise agreement rates. So those were pre-applied as part of the franchise agreement. But a reminder, the city, the residents, and, and commercial got a whole host of additional services with those increases.
Thank you, Kirsten. Um, so the proposition to eighteen process requires a forty-five-day notice and a public hearing. The notices were mailed uh by April twenty-fifth, and tonight we're holding that public hearing. On the right side of the screen is a screenshot of the notices that were made. In terms of timeline, the rate adjustment process kicked off in March when council authorized the rate process. As I mentioned in the last slide, um, April twenty-fifth, the notices were mailed and tonight is a public hearing and recommended rate adoption. And if adopted, the rates will take effect on July first. In terms of fiscal impact, there is no direct fiscal impact. Recology will reimburse the city for costs related to printing and mailing notices. And um our tonight's recommended action is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution approving a two-point-eight-seven percent increase to rates for solid waste uh collection services effective July first. And um that concludes our presentation. We're ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public testimony. All interested persons may testify for or against proposed solid waste collection service rates. We have no speaker cards. Okay. So once again, this is the final opportunity for anybody who wishes to, to um speak this evening before we close the public hearing and then.
Can we just clarify, uh, why Kirsten? I'm not saying there shouldn't be a rate increase, but why? I don't think I heard that in the presentation.
It's an allowable um increase for CPI, just amongst like anything else. The consumer price index. So it's.
So it's allowed, but is it needed?
Always needed.
Are there, are there any, any other speakers? Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And now the determination that there is majority uh protest or no majority.
The city perceived fourteen written protests against the solid waste collection rates. The number of written protests did not represent one half or more of the property upon which the solid waste collection rates are proposed to be imposed.
So I'll bring it to the council. If there's any quiet comments, action. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, nobody wants to pay more for it. And in these contracts, if we didn't allow them to increase the rates, they'd be out of business. So when we signed this franchise agreement, they're allowed to ask for these rate increases to make sure that their employees continue to be paying, that their, the, the transfer rates and the dumping fees are covered, the gas increases are covered. So it is a set-up system that from my understanding, every franchise agreement where a city enters into services for a trash holler, they have very, very similar instances. We have um very looking at a list, set it from the lowest. Right, so um I wanted to highlight a couple of things that we negotiated. Kirsten, if you could remind me, one of the biggest things that recall now what does for San Bruno is if there's dumping on the street, it used to be where people would call the city, city would go over there, pick it up, take it over to the yard, wait till they got a certain amount of debris in a, a debris box, and then they would call Recology. So the way that works now is through the app San Bruno Responds, you can see something. You, you take a picture of it, put it in, it has GPS, and Recology correctly notified and will tell you in a [inaudible]. One of the biggest concerns of San Bruno Response, and I've seen it generally gets picked up two days. Sometimes one day, but it's an incredible service that reduces the cost for the city to have to touch it. The other thing that, um, I believe is pretty big in the, uh, renegotiation, Kirsten, help me out, I can't remember, but multi-family apartments. Before we made this change, they didn't have the, the ability to call in Recology and say, hey, come pick up my, my sofa. Come pick up my, my washer or whatever appliance twice a year. So, how many, is it under twenty-five units or more, or I can?
Yeah, twenty-five units or less, if the twice a year more. And more than that, then we arrange debris box service with the property manager.
So, um, as much as I don't like to pay more for things, I understand this is the contract. Our family has reduced down to sixteen gallons, the smallest ones we had. It also encourages you to, like, recycle better and to, like, for us, like, eat, uh, fresher groceries, not, uh, or, uh, not what we can, it's kind of reduced our waste. So, um, it is a part of, part of, I guess, the cost of things that go up and, and, uh, as much as a lot of us don't like it, um, this is the, this is the, this is the standard. And, um, I have not heard, one, one, maybe one complaint about Recology, and I know I haven't had any, and, uh, so I just wanted to share that because it's a board for, for, and you know that it's in a contract and that's all.
And I want to say thank you that I've had this free pickup done, and you guys have been very generous. So I want to say that. And I also do use the San Bruno response, not with you guys, but anyway, it is a good thing to have it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I was going to add.
No, I just, I, I just had a quick, a quick comment. I was going to mention the same thing, but I was going to respond, but, um, I think I covered all of that. Um, I was actually going to do a shout out for this, for the, um, twice a year pickup. I know a lot of people don't take advantage of that, and they, they do take advantage of the twice a year spray cleanup, where you haul the garbage yourself down to the, to the, uh, to the church on Steeple Lane. Um, especially if you're pulling, just put it on your curb and make, and, and make a phone call first, arrange the day and put it on your curb, and then it's gone. And it works out really, really well. And it's a, that's a service that I don't think enough of us take advantage of. I want to shout out that and just, um, thankful for the great partnership between the city center and help us for it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Yeah, please. I, I also wanted to echo thanks to Recology for, for, for being, for partnership with Recology for many, many years, and all the very responsive partnering and work with. Thank you. And thank you for allowing us to be in the, in the good half of that chart. Very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't, uh, repeat what has already been said, but thank you. But at this point in the absence of majority protests, we have a resolution, resolution of the city council of the city of San Bruno approving an increase to rates for solid waste collection services provided by Recology, San Bruno effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
The motion to approve the resolution is just right by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? According to unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to item B.
Hold public hearing in accordance with Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one, Government Code Section thirty-five zero two point three, regarding the status of vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts.
Good evening to our H R manager.
Chief Lieutenant, council members, vice staff, all human resources. To market point on our students' job, statements improvement and retention efforts, and the length of the tax for our employees and our. Tonight's agenda will be going over our objectives, the background of Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one, um, a little bit of background regarding our bargaining groups and vacancy rates, and our recruitment retention, followed by recommended actions next up. So tonight's objective is to provide, um, the product stats on our vacancy rates and our recruitment efforts, such as the status in this public hearing. And background, Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one was enacted in September twenty, twenty-four, requires public agencies to present the status of vacancies and recruitment, maintaining, uh, intention for any recruitment and any processes, and this is in consideration of our budget. This report should be provided at least once annually in a fiscal year. And traffic vacancies may include the number of vacancies, reasons for vacancies, and lands to build. One thing to note is if any vacancy rates for any bargaining unit is twenty percent or higher, vacancy must provide additional information. This information can be provided by the type of vacancy, how long those vacancies have been open, the number of applications, uh, and the time, all the time period that's affected that buyer. Currently, the city recognizes six bargaining groups, four that are represented by the teacher local eight fifty-six, one represented by teacher local three fifty, and then our San Bruno Management Group Association, also known as the P M. Here are the budgeted full-time employees associated with this fiscal year for each of the, uh, one thing I note here, this does not include our mayor, council member, city manager, are unrepresented by individuals on the record. Tricked for the four groups that are represented by teacher local six, and the first column you see budgeted next, this is what was budgeted for this fiscal year. Fill M T's are those positions that are filled, that may be full-time employees, uh, interim, uh, appointed interim positions and any provisional position. Vacant F T is a current vacant vacancies through that, uh, group. And vacancy rates, the overall rate. One thing I'd like to note miscellaneous from here, the fifteen vacancies that's here, uh, includes the position that we are holding tra- uh, transition with the state. That's the management and San Bruno Management Group Association, which are the biggest. And so in total, none of the rates meet the twenty percent threshold, uh, in twenty-five sixty-one. However, we contact our labor representatives to let them know that the vacancy rate is getting aware of that. And the feedback, interacts with us both here in full support of our approach towards the vacancy rate, as well as our compensation strategy. Some of our recruitment highlights include maintaining internally our operations as well as identifying impact areas to scale. We implemented a new H R S system, a new resource management system, providing more clarity, consistency and streamlined processes from hiring managers and candidates. And adapting recruitment strategies overall, making sure we, the chief our leadership and manager outreach to ensure that our operations are aligned with the organization's strategy, as well as the environmental. Then hand in hand with our recruitment strategies are retention strategies, and these are focused more on items like our employee engagement, continuous initiatives that our department is supporting, including the action plans of a creative program, employee engagement surveys, as well as leveraging representative lack development group strategy in work. And then continuing to push forward our comprehensive compensation program, including the development of compensation guidelines, as well as moving forward our compensation spending through the year. And then last, uh, is, is a junior investment and learning development series, the structured training series we provide for employees, and professional development construction range. So I started learning to actually provide information from this and ended up from this public hearing, seriously important progress. And next step, in accordance with Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one, staff will continue to maintain the reward and report back in the year, reconsideration. Life opens up.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, no speaker cards.
Okay. Questions, um, from our council?
Thank you.
Right now.
Hey, thank you for agreeing. Uh, we got two questions. So of the fifteen vacancies reported, how many of those are to be filled potentially by city and employees?
Of the fifteen, yeah.
Nine, exactly. All right. And what vacancies would you say have been the hardest to fill?
Since we, I've been here to say this, we've had to retain it for that, and so each area of the department, um, I don't know if that's necessarily the same. I can provide the data, the full data for you. Vice Mayor?
It's fine. I'm just curious because, you know, we had. I don't know where it is, so it's sometimes, I thought it got, so we'll all get that later. So. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Tom, it's okay. Well, yeah, yeah, I just, I think I, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Just want to say thank you for the, thank you for the presentation, and I need, and I do want to, um, just call out the, the efforts, um, by, by staff led by the city manager for, for retention. Now, there's been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of attention, uh, put into this area, um, since, um, since our city manager joined us and, um, it's been an, an area that, that needed a lot of focus for many years, and I'm glad to see that, see that focus. Um, looking forward to seeing, uh, in, in, uh, also.
Seeing that, uh, that's an opportunity for anyone to speak on your public, uh, public hearing. Now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back, uh, to council again. This is a reason we're seeing it for the first time. It's because it's a, it's an assembly bill in Sacramento, so, um, staff gets to do something every year. Uh, any actions? Uh, the, now we're, it's now we just have to hold a public hearing. We don't need any, uh, just, wow, I'm sure. There we go. All right. Let's go to C.
Items. Item C, hold public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution lamenting the city's master fee schedule to increase or establish fees for parks and recreation facilities and services, and to increase fees for tree maintenance parks.
Members, I am the Insurgent Development Director for Community Services Department. I'm here this evening to discuss the proposed updates to master fee schedule for the community service department fees that were not included in the public hearing and fee schedule presented on April twenty-second. Given the agenda for tonight's presentation, the key items include an overview of the first year of operations for the Recreation and Ecology Center, proposed changes to the RAC membership structure and fees, adjustments to the community service department fees, and the fiscal impact of these fee adjustments. Annually, the city reviews fees and proposes adjustments based on operational costs and market rates for certain programs. The new Recreation and Ecology Center opened in July twenty twenty-four, introductory fees based on assumptions and analysis conducted during the construction period. We were committed to conducting a comprehensive fee analysis after the opening of the facility. The goal is to ensure the RAC provides a good value for members, ensure long-term operational sustainability, promote equitable access to facility for youth and, and seniors. The city worked with a third-party consultant to review the revenue from RAC memberships and daily admissions, and an evaluation of expenses to ensure operational efficiencies. Let's look at an overview of the RAC operations for the first year. RAC opened on July twenty-fourth, included programming and introductory prices. The grand opening celebration took place on August twenty-fourth. Since its opening, the RAC has become a vital hub to the San Bruno community. The RAC currently has over one thousand seven hundred members, over twenty-five thousand daily admissions, and the center is averaging almost three hundred visits per day. During the last year, staff received feedback on programs and general operations from the users and members of the public. Staff has implemented many changes based on these suggestions and is working to include more as we continue to evaluate operational efficiencies. While we anticipated a public subsidy, the subsidy is larger than expected due to the increased operational costs that were unknown during the previous budgeting process. The projected, projected annual operational expenses for the RAC is approximately four point two million dollars. Any subsidy for the facility is charged back to the general fund. Staff also began a benchmarking study with a third-party consultant. The third-party consultant conducted a market analysis on membership fees, daily admission prices and facility rental fees for the RAC. With RAC memberships, we looked at comparable facilities. During the benchmarking process, the consultant looked at similar municipal facilities such as the Siliman Aquatic Center in Newark and the Centennial Recreation Center in Morgan Hill, along with private gyms in the area. Many of the similar facilities in the area offer à la carte options for their facilities, where the participants pay for the specific programs they want to attend. The RAC utilizes an inclusive approach for their guests, where multiple amenities are available with membership and daily admissions. The benchmarking process showed the RAC offers the best value in the region. Here's an overview of the proposed changes that I will discuss over the next few slides. This overview includes a proposed formal fee structure that sunsets introductory promotional rates, adds incentives for resident memberships provided by a San Bruno Community Foundation grant, and creates new age-based membership tiers. The proposal also includes increasing resident and nonprofit discount rates for facility rentals. Include introducing party packages at the RAC and a three percent adjustment to all programs and services not related to the RAC. Benefits and ensures the financial sustainability of the facility. To help adjust to the new fees, the city will utilize funds from the foundation's RAC access grant to provide a twenty percent incentive to San Bruno residents to reduce the cost of their memberships for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Staff is proposing additional membership options for youth and seniors to promote access for these groups and reducing the overall impact, uh, financially reported dangers. Currently, youth are only able to access the facility with the daily admission or punch pass options, and seniors are included in the adult membership rate. The RAC will also offer monthly memberships without requiring an annual commitment. The monthly option lowers the barrier of entry and aligns with modern consumer expectations, making the RAC more accessible and marketable to a wider range of users, including those with short-term needs or financial limitations. Did you see the proposed fees for RAC memberships? The amount residents will pay with a twenty percent incentive provided by the foundations included on the chart. Here are two charts that show the standard membership prices and the impacts of the foundation resident incentives. If the incentives are approved, we will analyze the usage and recommend adjustments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. This slide outlines the incentives for residents and members. In addition to the resident membership incentive, existing members and new members will have an opportunity to lock in the introductory rate for an additional year if they purchase an annual membership prior to August first. New monthly memberships that begin prior to August first will receive a reduced initiation fee. Community outreach for these incentives will begin once the new rates are approved. In addition to the RAC fees, the fee schedule also includes a three percent market adjustment to program fees and rental rates for other reservable spaces not associated with the RAC. The market analysis for the RAC facility rental rates show that the current fees are in line with market rate for similar facilities. However, we received feedback from residents and nonprofit groups that they would utilize the facility more with a. However, we received feedback from residents and nonprofit groups that they would utilize the facility more with additional discounts. Staff is recommending an increased discount for residents to thirty-five percent from the current twenty percent and thirty percent percent for new base nonprofits from the current twenty percent. The fee schedule also includes the addition of party packages at the RAC to promote the facility as a premier venue for youth party and events, along with adjusting our pool rental fees to now include the cost of lifeguard staff for better transparency. This slide outlines the planned outreach for the new membership structure and fees. Imposed fees and three percent increase for other community services programs and services have a projected revenue increase of four hundred thousand dollars. This increase will provide the RAC ongoing financial success and reduce the operational impact on the general fund. The City of San Bruno is deeply grateful to the San Bruno Community Foundation for its generous grant funding of the resident incentive. This support plays a critical role in helping the city deliver on its goal of making the RAC the best value-for-membership experience among comparable facilities across the Bay Area for San Bruno residents. Staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution amending the city master fee schedule to a new report. Myself and Director Travis Carlin are available for questions regarding my presentation.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, an open public hearing. Are there any speaker firsts?
I have one speaker card for me, Julia. Other than that, I have no other speaker.
I have a question, sorry. I didn't know we had a podium for today.
Why don't you come to the mic?
Okay.
So they can hear you uh.
I didn't expect. I have something to say tonight. You know, it's not many of us here, so it's not so bad, right? Um, thank you for that presentation. Um, question, the uh Medicare. You know, many gyms if you go to have a special program for people on Medicare, is the is this the RAC have any intention of doing something like that?
We are working towards uh Medicare, medical discounts with with different initiatives and also with the silver speaker structure.
That right, because there's still more fit and there's several, right? Okay, non-passed, okay. Because I've been asking about that since it opened and I always, nobody really quite had the answer to that. I understand it's difficult. I just heard sales. I I watched the the rack going up intently photographed while I was blocking my dog for the years that it's going up. And I was so excited when it opened and it's beautiful, but unfortunately, I'm a member of the Y in San Francisco. And in fact, it's so much cheaper to belong to the Y, unfortunately, because I'm looking at a schedule that I picked up today that in addition to the membership, you have to pay for individual classes and you have to commit to these classes in a row, whereas when we had the old pool, we used to be able to stop in. And believe me, it's beautiful and I appreciate it. But it's I'm so bummed, to tell you the truth, because I thought this was going to be this incredible. But you know, it might just be for a person in my position retired at this point. It might just be uh somewhere else is a better fit at this point. And I'm super happy when I see a lot of the people coming in. But I guess I'm a little bummed out that when we think about paying the membership and then paying for the individual classes, if you really can go on a regular basis, it gets pretty pricey. And I guess I thought that wasn't going to be the case.
And so we're actually working on, I have a we are working on um including more um instructor-led fitness classes by city staff so that they are included in the membership. And over the last two or three months, we have added many and we're still working to add more. It is our goal for most of the classes to be included in the membership.
Oh, that would be great. That would be great. And also, I think I believe that the the tennis courts are being paved right now. Is that going on?
The service jest.
Thank you very much. Thank you, whoever's responsible for that. I'm a senior. I'm a pickler. I'm like a stereotype, but thank you. Thank you.
When they look at the lines uh for well tennis.
Thank you.
Uh any other uh questions, comments? Okay, with that, bring it to the uh council for the questions, comments. Councilmember Alzahar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you repeat again? Uh you mentioned about um a discounted rate for new uh members. Uh, will the discount rate apply in addition to the twenty percent um incentive from San Bruno Foundation?
Uh this twenty percent incentive is the discount.
Okay, thank you.
So it's. And I just just to be clear, I'm 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 to be honest, the the uh the impact of the incentive wasn't as clear as I said before as it was to your presentation. So I appreciate that presentation. The is this just for new members or people who signed up last last year? It'll be renewing, you know, here in the next couple of months. Will that twenty percent apply to that as well?
Yes, it would apply to all resident members.
All resident members. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Councilmember Salazar.
S- since the uh the increases are so dramatic, it is uh.
Councilmember Salazar.
Okay, that's that's since the increases are so chromatic um. You know, I I am a a little concerned about what it might do to demand for and and I know that you've been monitoring the use carefully. And uh I want to make sure that as these new fees go into place, we keep monitoring what that what that actual impact is going to be and making sure that each of these market segments uh is responding the way we anticipate. And I know that we're looking at uh you know, providing the incentives for residents. Uh but I know that a good number of the users here are non-residents, and so we definitely don't want to scare away people that are potentially uh you know, helping to keep this uh this building going. And so uh I I just kind of want to make sure that we're in a place where we're able to gather that information and we're monitoring closely and ready to respond if things don't go the way we anticipate.
Uh definitely. And so we do monitor our admissions weekly. I receive a report every Friday um that shows um our attendance for that week. And so we will keep an eye on that. And if we do notice any trends, we'll make sure to uh look into them further and skip this and pay the work.
Thank you.
Let me add one bit of information on there um and Councilmember Salazar. Uh one of the other things to keep in mind is one of the new things that we're adding is the opportunity for youth memberships. So for a family of four, you're actually going to see because it is a more affordable option for people to commit to that ongoing membership. They're getting a little bit more discounts um on the youth side of things. So for a family of four um or a non-resident, they're actually not seeing a huge jump in their uh in their memberships. And that's really the the um groups that we're screening as far as non-residents is a lot of non-resident families.
Your turn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. Um I do have to share um share the same concern as uh Councilmember Salazar. It's at first, it's like like and I think as we hear more about it, as we have the presentation in front of us, I think it's more digestible. However, I think in I'm concerned about public reaction and um we've only we haven't been open for a full year yet and we're seeing the full part of summer um where we open and schools out the street. And when are these prices taken? That test, not for
August first.
August first, so we'll have time. Uh hopefully get people to come on in. I he I hear I hear that, you know, the family of four is somewhat affordable, but if your families and there are bigger families than four at San Bruno, and so my concern there is it's going to be tougher for them to to have all their children to come over to these members. Um is there a way that you could have a an additional increase or some type of family membership? Um, because it it could become a hardship for a family to to really come out and everybody participate. Is there a way that that membership could be shared or similar to a punch pass? So it's it's a membership for a child and that card can be used for any of the kids instead of it. Or is it set up to each person has to have an individual card membership?
It is currently set up that every individual means it's a membership. We did look into family memberships uh and with a lot of our research with similar facilities, they often define a family and that family is normally four. And then any additional people that are on top of that is is an additional fee. So we feel like with our à la carte method, uh additional members receive a discount. Um we can represent the larger families with that.
Right. And I did submit this question earlier in writing. I think for the response, I want to make sure that um our residents also were were aware of it and perhaps um somebody can be better on that question about for those families or people that have um some financial hardship, what option do they have?
So currently with membership, uh they don't, we don't have any uh the assistance programs for that. We're working with the Foundation through the RAC Access Grant um to provide some subsidy for um people that are financially challenged to be able to come to the RAC, and we are hoping to unveil that in the fall.
And of that two point four million dollars that um is from the San Bruno Community Foundation, how much has been spent so far? How much will their um subsidy take up and what will he be left with? After this project is over, are the prices over?
Um, thank you for the question, Mayor. Um Vice Mayor Medina. Um right, our for the first year of the access grant, so the total grant is about two point two five million dollars. The first year, the access grant was approximately one million dollars. Um we're approaching right now about five hundred thousand dollars of that grant being used. Um and we'll be reimbursed for that five hundred thousand dollars. What um I what we are looking to do is report back to that for the uh San Bruno Community Foundation and then ask for a rollover of that initial five hundred thousand dollars into the next year, uh where we have already have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars allocated there. Um and so what we're looking to do is do programs like um scholarships and um do things like subsidize memberships for our for our our residents here. Um providing subsidized programming for our residents, finding specialized programming for kids that are at risk and people who have disabilities or have other access issues for the RAC. So we're working through all those things, building those programs, having consultations with the San Bruno Community Foundation to make sure that we're in line with what the intent will um of the grant is, but we're looking to really maximize that grant in the next fiscal year and use and enjoy giving that to promote access for our residents and all their users.
So after after that year, is there will be any funding still in the so twenty twenty five?
Sure. So for fiscal year um twenty twenty five, twenty six, we have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars here marked. And then we're also going to be asking the Foundation to roll that additional five hundred thousand dollars. Their executive director already knows that that request is coming forward. And then for the following year, we'll have another five hundred thousand dollars that we can use. And then of the idea with this whole grant is to find those sweet spots on what the market can handle during in San Bruno and making sure that we're able to be sustainable facility longer.
Uh my final question then is for the reservations that residents, the the lower fees that um which I think are a good that good idea. I I didn't hear or I thought I sent a question about how much money is being generated from the rental facilities. Just to have a clue about that. And when somebody reserves it at thirty or thirty-five percent discount, how often do they get to use that discount? And my concern is people um what I've heard here at the at the RAC and some other like basketball teams are trying to reserve in the gym that uh other teams like reserve larger times, and so they can't get in and actually reserve it for thirteen. So I wanted to make sure that there was a way that um more teams have access, especially those San Bruno teams, that they don't get like just left out by the place to play. So how perhaps you could come up with a way to make sure that you get a reservation spot and somebody gets reservation spots, that there's more awareness in being able to have uh our San Bruno youth uh being an incredible.
Sure. So I I hear a couple parts to that question. So I'm going to answer the first question or the first question first. Um I believe was um he what what our static or what our statistics are on rental rates. We had a pretty quick turnaround of questions that were returned to us today, so we can give that information to you on what our statistics are and what our trends are for rental rates. Um we are building rentals. People used to rentals here at the facility is very different than anything we've done before. Um so we're working through that right now. We're also trying to make it easier for people to rent the facility. So getting more transparent about some of the fees and things like that. We're building the website. Um right now, we're going to actually have a calculator on the website that will tell them um generally what their rental is going to cost by clicking on the different areas that they want to reserve and doing the add-ons on the website. So that will be helpful for them as well. Um as far as San Bruno goes, one thing that's unique about San Bruno that I haven't seen in other facilities or others or I haven't seen in any other cities is we do not have a field allocation policy and we don't have a rental allocation policy as it relates to youth sports. So a lot of cities will have a criteria that different sports leagues will have that will tier them and say what order they get preference of field racing. We don't have that here. It's a first come, first served um situation here. And right now, it seems to work for outdoor facilities. But we hear you as far as it comes to our indoor facilities and opening a facility here like this, there's so many different philosophies that apply around. So there's one philosophy that it should be open to members the majority of the time, right, to to come in and use the gym for basketball events. Then there's also a philosophy that we need to make revenue on the facilities. We need to make sure that we're renting the facility out as well. And then the third thing is that we have city programs that we need to accommodate in our facility. So right now, we're trying to find that sweet spot. Um and it may require us to set aside certain times for rentals for our youth sports organizations and set up some type of process for identifying um how those sports groups get allocated. But we have been kind of taking it case by case right now. Um we have, you know, when we do get a group that comes in and they really want to take charge of the facility and have a lot of space, we do pump the brakes on them and say, hey, we've got to balance this with our membership or we need to see what else comes in. So we are doing a little bit of that.
I appreciate all that thought. Why our city not having a policy on rentals for the for grants that that strategy, that's that's what I I've heard and I I have um a lot of contacts, a lot of teams, a lot of sports. The one thing I'm looking at with your planned outreach pages is to make sure that we really uh go to our schools and and letting them know and what many people may not know is the uh childcare program that you guys set up and and um that's another benefit of being a being a member, right, is that that's for free. We're up to like forty-five minutes or something or whatever.
So one thing that I can't get different, whether we got a public comment on this today, Vice Mayor, is that um we are working out, we are working through possible solutions to add our having some of our classes part of the membership. So um one of our um former speakers tonight said that at the Y, she has her classes agreement. I'm I'm a member. I go there. I enjoy the fitness classes. They're free as part of my membership. Let me tell you, it's not free because I mean, I don't like to go there. But um one of the things that we're working through is a model where we have our fitness classes part of the membership. So that is a feature here. That will be a feature in the future. Um the other thing too is subsidizing that watch program where parents can draw their kids in while they're working out or basketball or cool uh that to be watched while they're here in this. So we're working through those different incentives, those different programs, but also making sure that we're not exceeding the value of the membership as we're adding those different things. So this next year is going to be another year of learning and figuring out what works and what doesn't work. And it's really good to have the access grant so that we can pretty freely try those.
And and reminding how long is um that childcare allocation provided for?
I think it is the forty-five and four inside. I think so.
So if somebody wanted to come through a council member, but council meeting, they remember. What time, what hours are?
They could. Right now, we have limited hours, but as we build those classes that parents will want to take, we'll keep building that alongside of that. So it's the two day.
That's not the two day career basis.
Yes.
And access. Any other? Uh councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that um the punch pass pricing. that was scheduled wasn't included in the twenty percent incentive are already also applying them. It looks like this is most affordable for some residents.
So the incentive program only applies to resident memberships, our goal is to drive people to the memberships. With the punch passes, they're really receiving a thirteen or fifteen visits for the price of thirteen. So if you do use the facility regularly, then the membership option is the best. The punch pass is great for someone who doesn't know when they're going to come. They might only come one day a week this week, they might come three days a week next week. And so that's why we opt for that option. But it is, is planned to have the incentive for resident memberships to encourage people to sign up as members.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to have a public comment, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, this is my last statement.
So because we don't always have, I think all of us are enjoying your presence here, why not? Nobody usually gets the two bites of the apple, but for you, yes.
Oh. Well, thank you, I just thought.
Go to the mic.
Okay, thank you. This is my last question, errands about pickleball. And I know this sounds very frivolous, but you know, there's something beautiful and amazing about pickleball and it's why it's grown and it's everywhere now. And I really believe it could help with world peace, believe it or not. But nonetheless, I'm going to stick to San Bruno. So they're painting the lines on the courts, correct? One of the things that, where I played pickleball in a lot of different venues, a lot of different places, and there's a, there's a rule that you either put down your paddle or there's a rack like in Millbrae and in different places, there's a rack that you put your paddle on and then you just rotate in. And it's part of the beauty of the game that you begin to know your neighbors and you begin to know people. And we don't have that here, like I've played just a couple of times and it's just rules and it says temporary rules. So all I want to say is that if, if somebody, I don't know who the person is who's the force behind the pickleball, I'd love to just talk to them and say, is this something you could consider? I don't know who that person might be.
They're listening to you now.
Sorry, I heard that. See, that's why I wanted to get out and say this, thank you, we can just talk for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, without bringing back council, any action? This is a resolution request.
And thank you for the time, I appreciate.
You're welcome. I'll leave motion to approve, to adopt a resolution, you have read the details. Zero second.
Seven.
Motion and set pin, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Asked unanimously by a vote. And with that, we're going to take I was going to say five minutes, man, who wants gamers rolling? So we're going to take a very, very, very short break. Don't go far. We're going to the public hearings, we're going to move on to conduct the business. And what I'd like to do is take item B first and then we will do item A.
Item B, receipt of part of the fiscal year twenty twenty five to twenty six, San Bruno Community Foundation operating budget. Give you one moment as I pull up the presentation. Good evening, honourable mayor and council members. I'm Leslie Hata Mia, the executive director of the San Bruno Community Foundation, where I've been working for the past ten plus years. We appreciate this opportunity to come before the city councils, we do every year, both to present our budgets, but to also share with you sort of the highlights of the past year for the community foundation. As you know, we were created in twenty thirteen in the aftermath of the twenty ten gas pipeline explosion charged with administering the seventy million dollars in restitution funds for the long-term benefit of our community here in San Bruno. So let me just go through a few highlights from this past year. As you know, we've been supporting the city itself in a variety of different ways. The highlight of the past year, as you all know, was the opening of this brand new beautiful center that we are in, a project eight years in the making. We committed fifty one and a half million dollars to this, to the design and construction of this project. We have paid out all but about two hundred fifty nine thousand on the, on those eight grants, which we expect to be able to pay out this summer and finally be done with this project. We're excited about how well it's been doing, as you heard earlier in tonight's meeting. We also, as we discussed earlier, awarded a two point two five million dollar grant to the city. That's a three-year grant to support startup programming and outreach activities to really get the RAC on the strong, sustainable financial footing. We are happy to provide that support because just like you, we want to make sure this building, this facility is successful on an ongoing basis. We believe this, this grant funding will help get the RAC off onto a good start with that. One other highlight with the new facility we helped support for the city was the opening of Centennial Plaza, which we supported with a five hundred thousand dollar grant. We are excited to see this becoming a hub in the downtown area, really wonderful gathering spot for people needing a break or performances or people eating outdoors in the downtown area. We're also supporting the city's downtown beautification efforts with a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. We're enjoying the new street pole banners that are up and we look forward to the city progressing further on its work on medians, the planters and trees in the downtown area to be replying. We also this past year awarded two grants, one to the city, one to the San Bruno Education on behalf of the San Bruno Park School District to support San Bruno's ongoing sister city relationship with Narita Japan. With these grants, we recognize the value of this sister city relationship as an essential community building and educational initiative for the city, the school district and the education foundation. And we look forward to this, really getting this relationship sort of on a post-COVID strong footing going forward. Part of the grant funding is for sustainability purposes so that the school district in particular and the education foundation can build up some fundraising mechanisms so that there will be future funding for this relationship on an ongoing basis. The most recent strategic grant we awarded earlier this year, which was for the Crestmore Fields Project, we're partnering with the city to fund this at the three point four million dollar level. The board has also expressed a willingness to consider funding the permanent lighting for this site if necessary, once better cost estimates come in on that. We are excited to see this site turned into a twenty first century soccer complex for our community to enjoy. We've also been supporting athletic field improvements in the school district, San Bruno Park School District, with a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to the education foundation to support field improvements at John Muir and Bel Air Elementary Schools, as well as Parkside Intermediate School, the photo on the left is the new field at John Muir, which was finished in the fall and both the school children as well as the local soccer organizations have been enjoying use of this field all year. At Bel Air, much of the grant is going towards new fencing on that site. They've been able to get in-kind donations in terms of working on the irrigation system there from local soccer organizations. So our funding is going to the fencing. And the school district is working with the softball organizations to do improvements at Parkside. Hopefully those will be progressing later this year. In addition to all our strategic grant making, we run to in-house programs. The first is the community grants fund, which allows local organizations to apply for grant funding up to twenty five thousand dollars a year. This was our ninth year of running the community grants fund. Back in December, we awarded twenty nine grants, supporting a whole variety of initiatives and programs. Everything from the pit photo on the left is for the organization Quora, which helps domestic violence victims. The photo on the right is with the mindful life project, which supports mindfulness and wellness training at some of the elementary schools in San Bruno. And then the middle photo is a presentation of our check to the city, supporting the summer reading program. We have over the past nine years given out, I believe it's two point six million dollars in community grants. This year again, Googling YouTube contributed a hundred thousand dollars. They've been a wonderful community partner on this program. And then we also last week just awarded our tenth round of Crestmore scholarships, another fabulous group of high school, graduating high school seniors and community college transfer students. We awarded eleven scholarships. Thank you to the mayor for helping us do that presentation. They total a hundred sixty five thousand dollars. We can see the colleges that this year's scholars are going to, which is an impressive group of colleges that they're all heading to. Over the past ten years, we've given out over a hundred Crestmore scholarships totaling about one point five million dollars. This is just a summary, this slide just shows the summary of all of our community investments over the past decade. Two point six five million in community grants, Crestmore scholarships, again, one point five two million and strategic grants totaling sixty one point four million, sixty one point six four million, of course, including the fifty one point five million for this beautiful building. For a total community investment of sixty five point eight million. What's remarkable is that's what we've already given out based on the original seventy million. Yet we still have a significant amount of money left in the bank to improve the investments. The original plan that we had was to have fifty one million in our endowment for the long-term investment strategy. And we've only used a small portion of that to fund basically our community grants fund and Crestmore scholarship outlay for the past ten years. The remaining fifty five million was to be spent down over seven to ten years and we're at year nine since we took over the restitution funds. And we have basically right on schedule committed that format. Due to a robust, robust stock market, despite a little bit of up and downs in the market, some market volatility and inflation in recent years and especially in the last few months, the some market volatility and inflation in recent years and especially in the last few months, the new federal administration. But we have enjoyed robust market returns, solid fiscal management practices and policies by our board and staff, and sound fiscal management by our team at Sand Hill Local Advisors, who've gotten a much bigger bang for our buck than the original $70 million. We've made almost $66 million in community investments, plus funded our operating expenses for more than a decade and we still have nearly $24 million left in net assets. As you know, on and off for the past two years, and really in earnest in the past few months since the beginning of this year, now that the RAC grants are basically paid out, the board has been deliberating what's next for the foundation. What is the most meaningful use of those remaining restitution funds? The board looked at a variety of different options and quickly set aside the option of following endowment model with the remaining assets. Under this scenario, the foundation would be sustained in perpetuity but at a relatively modest annual payout, below $1 million a year, probably in about the $800,000 a year range based on projections from our investment management team to support the foundation's programs and operations in order to maintain the purchasing power of the endowment's corpus. The board went away from this model because the operating costs required running a public agency like ours would make up a large percentage of the annual budget this year and the foundation would be able to continue the Community Grants Fund and Crestmore Scholarship or really not much else. The board also looked at a second option of spending down the remaining funds over an extended period of time, say 10 to 20 years, but concluded even in that scenario, the annual budget would still be fairly limited, maybe the $1.3 to $1.5 million a year range. It would not allow for the larger projects where we've really seen the big impact in our community, such as the Crestmore Fields project, on an annual budget of a little over $1 million a year, we would not be able to do those more substantial projects that we have had the opportunity to fund and really believe make a significant and meaningful impact on our community. The board ultimately decided to spend down the remaining net assets in the near midterm on a number of, a small number of larger legacy projects and wind down our other programs. Especially since seeing the impact of this beautiful building, the RAC, the board believes that this strategy will have a more consequential and lasting impact than making smaller annual community investments by awarding Crestmore scholarships, community grants, and other more modest strategic grants over the next 15 to 20 years. Board members noted that continuing the foundation in perpetuity has never been a part of the foundation's mandate and noted that while ending popular programs like the Crestmore Scholarship and the Community Grants Fund is difficult, concluding those programs is necessary to maximize the funds available for any final legacy projects. As you know, the board identified a new fire station number 52 as its top choice to receive the bulk of the remaining net assets. Well, because it appears to be the main viable community facility project for the city in the next half-decade and the city has the additional funding via Measure Q to complete the project as the foundation acknowledges that the $15 to $19 million that will likely be able to offer to the project will be a substantial contribution, but we understand it is unlikely to fund the entire project and that you will need additional funding. The board also recognized that funding a new fire station, given the origins of the restitution funds that created this foundation, is the perfect full-circle project for the foundation. We, the foundation, greatly appreciate the city council's willingness to allow the foundation to be a funding partner on this project and we look forward to moving forward with the city as the fire station 52 gets developed. We are also investigating a couple of other possible monoprants, such as I mentioned before, the permanent lighting at the Crestmore Fields, as well as potentially doing the final additional major grant for the school district to support our publics. As part of these strategy changes, the board decided to sunset the Crestmore Scholarship and the Community Grants Fund. We will finish administering the grants and scholarships that have already been awarded, but we will not be offering new rounds of either grants this year. The board has also directed the redesignation of all funds currently in the quasi-endowment to the strategic pool and that transfer will take place by the end of this month. The objectives, time horizon, and risk tolerance for the strategic pool is more appropriate than the quasi-endowment now that the board plans to spend down the remaining funds for the next five years or so and that redesignation does not require any amendments to our investment policy. So that is a recap of our year, which has been a packed year as usual. And now I'd like to get down to the details of our fiscal year 25-26 budget. Want to give you an overall financial overview of the foundation's history and health. It allows you to see the budget in a little context of our financial situation. Our initial assets were about $70.5 million, that included the initial grant from P G D, which was $68.75 million in cash and then it was five vacant property lots valued at $1.525 million. The city, as you know, sold, redeveloped for about $2.5 million, which made up the roughly $70 million that was eventually transferred to the foundation. Our total initial assets included the $69.8 million that were transferred to our liquidity accounts in 2016 as well as about $700,000 in cash that the city had already transferred us in the previous couple of years to care of original operating costs. The investment, total investment value added through April, that is those of the investment gains on our portfolio being managed by Sand Hill. That's been about $21.6 million as of the end of April. That does fluctuate based on market returns, so actually it'll probably be a little bit higher right now because we have seen a little bit of market gain since the end of April. There's been a lot, there's been quite a bit of fluctuation last couple of months, but it does appear that we're back on an upward trajectory. Our donations and other income, even though we have not actively fundraised, we have brought in about $1.8 million over the past decade. Those have not run through our investment accounts as a stating our, basically our bank accounts, so they don't show up in our investment gains, but are important to note. And then our total funds dispersed, that's the actual money we paid out either in our grants or scholarships or pay for our operating costs, have been about $63.3 million. So our total assets as of the end of April were $30.6 million. Again, that's a little bit higher right now because of the uptick in the market. We had total liabilities as of the end of April of $6.8 million. Those are, you know, a lot of our grants are large and spread out over multiple years. We don't pay it out all at once. Our scholarships are similar in that sense than our multi-year. So we do have about $6.8 million in liabilities where we've already made those commitments but have not actually paid out the funds, leaving us, as I mentioned earlier, with a total net assets as of April of $23.8 million. So, despite some market turbulence, despite the fact that we have been spending money to benefit this community, including more than $50 million for this building, we still have a very healthy balance sheet of nearly $24 million. So when you look at our budget, please review it in the context of this full financial picture. It's also important to remember to think about the budget in terms of the board's recent strategic decisions. The budget before you reflects these strategy changes, so you'll see savings in some of the operating and program expenses due to the wind down of the Crestmore Scholarship and the Community Grants. You'll also see a large placeholder for strategic grants in anticipation of the first of the fire station grants and other final legacy projects we may be making. The budget also reflects the board's decision to move all quasi-endowment funds to the strategic pool so that the funds available for operation, this is entirely transfers from strategic to liquidity. In the past, we had funds flowing from both the quasi-endowment and the strategic pool that paid for our operations in our ground town place. Also, just want to mention that our budget is not a typical nonprofit budget where the goal is for expenses to equal revenues. Most nonprofit budgets are income-driven because they can only spend what they raise in that given year. Our situation is a little different because we started with a substantial funding base and so our budget is more expense-driven based on the outlays that we plan to make to fulfill our strategic decisions. Our budgeted income is income, but it's really transfers from our investment accounts. It's not income in the traditional sense of us bringing in a lot of donations or having revenue generating operations. And so we don't typically seek a balanced budget because the, our expenses are based on the outlays we plan to make this year and our funds available for operations are based on what our cash needs are for a given year. Our cash needs don't always match our expenses because we expense our grants when we actually make the grant if it's spread out over multiple years. We spend the money and our cash needs are spread out over multiple years. So the fact that our, our expenses and our funds available for operation don't mirror each other should not be a basis for concern because they're based on very different calculations. So let's start with, wrong direction. Let's start with our expenses. We have three main categories of expenses. Our personnel expenses are lower this year with the wind down of community grants and the Crestmore Scholarship. We are eliminating our program manager, which was a part-time position. Our non-personnel support costs are also expected to be lower, mainly again due to the wind down of the community grants and Crestmore Scholarship. Note that all budgeted amounts operate as ceilings and we're very cost-conscious when we make our purchasing decisions so that actual costs usually come in well lower than the budget projections. In our current fiscal year, actual non-personnel support costs are projected to be about 27% lower than the budget amount, so we typically come in well under budget, non-personnel support costs. I'm not going to go through every line item, every expense line in our, on the expense side, but they are detailed in the stat memo and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end that you may have about them. In terms of our direct program expenses, as you see, we are winding down Crestmore Scholarships and Community Grants. Those are both zeroed out this year. We've put in a $5 million placeholder for strategic grants to reflect what will likely be the first of the fire station grants and any other final legacy grants that may be awarded this year. Just a reminder that specific strategic grants require specific board approval of those grants. So just because there's a placeholder does not mean we won't be using those funds necessarily. Specific grants being considered by the board require board approval and then will be expensed at that time. We are, as I mentioned before, seeing some savings through the change in strategy. There's the direct program outlays for community grants funding and Crestmore Scholarships for a total of savings of about $465,000 as well as operating expenses both on the personnel and non-personnel side of about $57,000. So by winding down those programs, we'll save more than $0.5 million this year. It's possible we'll see some additional savings in addition to what we budgeted, but we think that's, the $57,000 is a safe estimate based on our projections on salaries, payroll taxes and benefits, telecommunications, postage and shipping, marketing and communications, office supplies, legal fees, accounting fees, other consultants, and travel training and meetings. So we are seeing, we will see budget savings across the board. This is a breakdown of our, on the income side. As you will see, we typically do get some donations, but we have none committed at this point. So from a budget perspective, it's projected at zero, although it's possible, if not likely, that we will receive some donations over the year. Miscellaneous income tends to just be random when that occurs. It is usually when a grant that was expensed in a previous fiscal year, for some reason, gets returned and isn't used and then it shows up as income in a few fiscal years in accounting thing. So nothing like that is budgeted. As I mentioned before, our income is really our transfers from investments. This year, the entire transfer will come from our strategic pool of about $9.5 million. So those will be the funds available for operations. Sorry. In past years, the main driver of our need for cash has been the RAC grants because we paid out $51.5 million in grants over the past few years. All of that money actually has been already transferred from our strategic fund to our liquidity pool and so none of the funds needed that you see in the income line this year will go towards the RAC because the RAC has already been fully chatted for our previous years. Rather, our strategic pool cash needs this year will be based on our operating expenses predicted for this year as well as our cash needs for the full list of grants you see listed on the slide. The remaining $259,000 for the RAC contraction grants. We have not paid anything out on the downtown beautification grant yet. We expect that grant to be completed this year and we'll be paying that full amount. School athletic field improvements grant still has balance around $63,000. The second year of the Narita Sister City grants will have around $36,000. The RAC startup programming and outreach grant will be somewhere in the $500,000 to $600,000 for the first year. We are aware of the city's desire to roll over the balance from the year one allocation for that grant into the year two. The Crestmore Fields project grant, we're a little unclear on the timing of the outlays for that grant, so in order to be able, if necessary, if that project moves along quickly this year, to be able to make the full grant payment, as well as the $5 million in the potential strategic grants that are budgeted. So that's how we get the, our cash needs of about $10 million total cash needs. We do have a carryforward from the current fiscal year of about $700,000, which is what leaves us with a $9.5 million strategic payout. So that's our budget in a nutshell. Last week, the foundation board approved our fiscal year 25-26 budget. It approved the transfer from the strategic pool to the liquidity pool of the $9.5 million to cover our cash needs in the next fiscal year. I have an authorization as part of that resolution to be able to break up that transfer into smaller amounts and not transfer the full amount if we don't need the full amount, so it's a ceiling. And then the board also directed me to submit our budget to the city council, which is why we are discussing it here tonight. So we respectfully ask for the city council's approval of the foundation's fiscal year 25-26 budget. Tonight is just a presentation, it will come back to your later June meeting for formal approval. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about the budget today, but we do look forward to seeking your consideration later this month and help us continue the good work we've been doing to benefit all of the people of San Bernardino. And before I close, I'd just like to thank the council and as well as key members of the city staff for your collaboration and partnership over the past year and, I can't try to paraphrase, for the past dozen years that we've been in existence. We especially want to know the support and cooperation of the city manager's office, the community services department, and the finance department. Those are all departments that we work with closely in administering these grants that have been serving our community over the past few years. Thank you and happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the information and the report. Comments, questions? The executive director? Comments? I know it's coming back, but I should say. Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Leslie Hata Mia, for the great support and approach. All great things that San Bernardino Community Foundation has tried.
I just wanted to have a longer-term understanding.
So... By winding down the foundation... we're by winding down foundation in the next five years. So all the funds are being transferred to less less risky investment. So the foundation then will be allocating money that has already been designated in in three slots. The firehouse, the five million dollars strategic grant that includes course payment for the fire station, the or something for the the schools and possibly the bills. And then there's the majority fifteen nineteen million dollars uh presented at the at the council meeting where we accepted the partnership. So over the next five years, the foundation will be just overseeing the payment of those funds?
It will be, uh, well, this year we still have to actually uh, you know, work with the city on the fire station project and what those grants will look like. We expect that that will be structured similar to the way we did the RAC project, which was a series of RAC was a series of age in my grants. Um, where we would grant money for different components of the project as it proceeded. And I expect that it will proceed in a similar fashion to the fire station. So rather than just one big grant, it will probably be, you know, an initial architectural services grant and maybe a grant that helps with the land acquisition and then, you know, you move through the process. Um, so all of those grants still need to be um worked on and and you know, come up with the what the those look like, get the board approval, execute grant agreements and then execute um those grants. Usually there's some reporting component by the city. Um, and then we make payment on those grants. I expect that they'll be similarly um structured. So there's that work that the foundation will need to do. We still have, as you saw, a number of grants that are are still in the payment process. So the Crestmore Fields grant, right, we haven't paid out any money on that. The RAC um startup programming and outreach grant, that grant, we haven't paid anything out. The Noria Grant, a three-year grant, the school athletic fields grant is um still ongoing. And then a number, all of our scholarships are all tied here. And we will make good on all of the scholarships previously awarded and those will be paid out of over the subsequent years. In addition to the fire station project, we do, you know, there may be an addition to the Crestmore Fields project if we end up doing the lighting, if that's needed, as well as whether there's any additional grants for the school district. So this year, there will still be quite a bit of activity in terms of developing all of those projects um and moving forward with those. Um, in the coming years, yes, it will be focused mainly on administering already awarded grants and scholarships. And you will see a sort of downsizing of the uh community foundations operations as well on an ongoing basis. You've already started to see that um in this budget and I expect that that will continue.
Right, so I can see, I can, I understand now that first year going forward to get these grants in place and once they're in place, then um they're kind of like self-driving. It's like that grant is for this, this grant, I mean, you're gonna break it down like you did the RAC. But then to administer it seemed like it couldn't be, wouldn't take that much effort after it was already done right. So um first year, I understand, then going on for the second year, then the foundation would be administering the grant, but I guess, I guess it gets to a certain point of of staff's time and then it's your time, you're the only one staff now. It's like after the, after the next year.
I mean, that that's something that we'll be looking at as this year goes on. No, it's very much um on the table right now of what this staffing will look like on an ongoing basis. I think for this year, the board is in agreement that they're in terms of administering grants and scholarships already out there, plus doing all the additional work on these final projects. Um, plus, you know, we are losing a part-time staff person. So some of the work on those community grants and Crestmore scholarships that the program manager would have been administering um will now fall on he's the executive director and the only staff person. So there is that additional work that will need to be done. But for this year, there is a full-time job for the E D. Um, the other thing to remember is we are a public agency. We have um, you know, regular board meetings that need to be supported um and and other sort of regulatory uh things that we have to abide by that to require staff time. Just preparing for our meetings um is is a substantial amount of work. Uh, so that will still be on an ongoing basis. But you know, we are looking at, yes, as as we start to wind down, um staffing will be on the table as per how that will also wind down.
And there is one pool of money now, so that's where it sits with, I don't know, some type of
So the, so the strategic, the strategic pool is still um a managed fund. It's, we have the strategic pool and then the liquidity pool. The liquidity pool is the pool where the money is really basically in cashing back cashed-in ones and very yes, completely in a capital preservation. The strategic pool is about a seventy-two percent fixed income. What's the other side, twenty, twenty-eight percent equity? So there's some opportunity for upside, but it's it's fairly protected right now. Um, and so it's a much more conservative investment um pool than the quasi-down which is more your traditional sixty, forty equity fixed income. So because we need to now preserve the funds, because once we make that commitment to you, we want to make good on it. Um, you know, one difference between when we have the, when we were paying on the RAC grants is we still had the quasi-down. Even though the quasi-down wasn't intended to be used to to fund the RAC, had there been some kind of catastrophic market downfall, um we would have had additional funds that could have been used if needed to supplement um to pay off our obligation on the RAC. This time we won't have that. So we need to be very conservative in the way we um we move our funds over as more conservative investment vehicle. So we're working closely with our investment um management team. The investment committee meets quarterly and every month, every quarter, we'll be looking at that and then making recommendations as, say, the fire station project moves forward and we have better clarity on when the money will be needed. That money then will be shifted over to liquidity where it is safe, safe.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much. Once again, uh, we received the budget. I know we're becoming bad at it.
Great. Thank you.
You. All right. Look at, look at these right over here. Sure, they're so excited for this next topic. Go. Man, uh, I may.
Pay the mayor rec- receive the city manager's recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six and provide direction for preparation as the city council adopted budget, which is scheduled for final approval on June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's giving a moment to pull up the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I am pleased to present to you uh my third, believe it or not, budget year of the city of San Bruno. In like the prior two budgets I presented, this budget is also balanced. And that is always a very critical factor um for the council to consider as it has been moved forward. We're gonna walk you through a detailed presentation. Um, really tonight, I'm gonna talk about the objective. It'll be important, we use the term in the past, setting the table. I want to help the council understand how we got to what we got to, sorry. We're gonna provide a budget overview from this side, chief financial officer, provide your capital budget overview from the assistant to the city manager for a recommendation and any questions at the end of course. The objective tonight is to receive my recommended uh budget for you. It is very intentionally at a high level. This document is three hundred and ten pages long and there's a lot of detail in here. And instead of doing page by page, we thought we'd keep it high level for the council and for the public. Um, the key take takeaways tonight is to hear nothing else about my presentation. The budget is balanced, we maintain existing services and in fact, we extend the service to some cases. So setting the table really quickly. So why do we do a budget? You know, we are required to pay our bills and it it budget sets service and program priorities. It communicates the city's finances. The budget is probably your annual um policy document. That's probably the most important document you have, uh, important decision you made on an annual basis. So before we kick off the budget, let's talk about what we did this year. And fortunately, if Lizzie's still here, she probably left. She stole my thunder. That's why I wanted to go first, but it's okay. We're gonna talk about some of the accomplishments, which again, this this council already knows about. Obviously, opening the recreation, a long wait in recreation, aquatics, etc., with a big, big deal in the city. Um, we were able to invest about ten million dollars and pave about nine, almost ten square miles of street repairs. Um, we replaced a hundred and fifty R O. streetlights, which was very, very significant for us. There is a police chief that we were able to hire. Centennial plaza was revamped and reopened. We sold city net and measure Q was a success. So we, I would say we've had a success for a year. Looking forward at the budget again, I can keep this high level, I think we'll jump into a little bit more of the details. Um, you know, the city can buy the numbers, it's a two hundred and eighty-seven million dollar budget, all funds combined. All funds combined, forty-nine different funding source, uh, excuse me, forty-nine different funds. And coincidentally, two hundred and eighty-seven employees. Each employee does not earn a million dollars. That's not how math works. Please don't, please don't do that. Um, the general fund, which is the council's discretionary fund, where we have the most latitude, is balanced. It's a sixty-eight point eight million dollar spending plan and it pays for a hundred and eighty-eight of two hundred and eighty-seven employees. The capital improvement program is a hundred and thirty-six billion dollars this year. It's funding a hundred and eighteen projects. And just because I know this is such an important um topic for the council and the community, we plan to invest about fifteen and a half billion dollars in street paving and sidewalk. So a budget's a pretty simple document. It had, the math has to add up, it's expenditures, it's revenues and basically they need to zero out at the end. And some of the things that we look at as we're looking at expenditures is the, in the general economic conditions of county of the state and of the country right now. Um, one could say it's influx. I'm not sure one can really quite understand clearly what the future looks like. Some of the things like tariffs and what it does to the stock market. I think Leslie mentioned that they went through some challenges early part of the year with, you know, the rise and fall and the rise and fall. We're gonna face similar um situations. We have, as you, council knows, we have a couple do unfunded state mandates. One of them was that the high, that have high hazard fire zones that the maps that you guys approved recently. Uh, and as an, as a service organization, you know, we really are committed to when we need to invest in our workforce. And seventy-three percent of our budget goes towards personnel costs, that's fifty billion dollars. We want to make sure that we are investing in the, in our people appropriately and properly. We have, all of our labor agreements will expire at the end of this calendar year. And the budget does include contingency for uh for salary adjustments uh for future just uh future. Sort of more critically, um are our revenue considerations and at, you know, so it's a sixty-eight million dollars, sixty-nine million dollar general fund budget. And really at risk right now is nearly twenty million of that sixty-eight, sixty-nine million dollars, which is pushing thirty percent of our budget. When I say at risk, it's not necessarily in jeopardy, but it's something we've got to keep a really close eye on. I'm gonna show you how that adds up. We have talked extensively about the B L F in loop and sort of the seven million dollars we get. We've had a, we've had a commitment from the state to receive this money year after year for the past twenty-plus years. As this council knows, as the public may know, this is in in jeopardy. The state budget did not originally include it. Um, and that at risk for us is about three million this year. But we have been told, uh, you know, time and time again, that we should not rely on this money on the long term. That's seventy million dollars on a, again, all all the round, all the amount of numbers are simple math. On a seventy million dollar budget, that's ten percent of our budget that the state of California is threatening to take away from us. The state's also looking at, because of certain legislation and a certain lawsuit, council might write the call in the E R A F rebate education revenue automation fund. Um, again, something we've received year after year, it's always been a threat, but there's, this is now in litigation right now. And potentially, the risk of the city could be another two million or two million dollar loss in revenues. The C D T F A ruling, council's very aware of the 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 sales tax sharing agreement we have and how the state has challenged the uh the legality of that. And we are in litigation with that topic right now and that's another sixty-seven million dollars. And finally, we learned, really most recently, the state enacted legislation which allows the Indian tribes to challenge greatly the existence of our parks. And that's a, that's another nearly four million. So in the aggregate, we are, so your city manager and your finance staff is concerned that twenty million dollars from our sixty-eight, sixty-nine million dollar general fund budget is at risk. It's not being taken away. Very, very clear. These are, these are the things we gotta look at as we look down about our future. So what do we do in advance? And I have one council member who does not like my turn, but um the rest of you, I'm gonna hope two council members apparently do not like my turn. The five-year plan for the San Bruno triple flip. The triple flip is a little tongue-in-cheek about something that occurred many, many years ago. And I, I thought we could get forward with a little bit of humor. Uh, but the triple flip is a way of addressing some of these revenue threats and what we may do about it. And the triple flip is gonna look at three different revenue sources. Enforce this measure Q. Measure Q, thanks to the voters of San Bruno, uh, awarded the city or approved for the city nearly over a hundred million dollars for future bond issues and is very restricted to streets, fire stations and stormwater. You know, this council knows that. And because it's restricted, you know, it's really gonna focus on cap. Measure G, on the other hand, is really not restricted at all. It's a revenue source that's very fungible. And in this year's budget, we are looking at, impart the new council initiatives there as well as unfunded mandates just as a way of covering these costs, um, these increased pressures on our budget. The triple flip works this way. And thanks to what the council did a couple of weeks ago and the generosity of the foundation, the thirty million dollar fire station that would normally have come out of measure Q, now that the foundation is offering up to nearly twenty million of that thirty million, it's gonna free up monies for pavement. And right now, measure G pays for a lot of the pavement in the city. Remember, measure G is very fungible. It's, it's got a lot of um opportunities to pay for operations. So if we're freeing up twenty million from measure Q and now the streets now can be paved with measure Q light that we otherwise would have set to the uh fire station. And then measure G now is is potentially available over five years to pay for some operations that otherwise we would have to look at the gen- and basically general complex, which is service space. By looking at the triple flip, the five-year triple flip, we're able to preserve services, in fact, enhance services, still pay the streets and roads we're gonna pay, still build the fire station we're gonna build, still invest in stormwater, as the council heard earlier tonight. Uh, so it's, it's just moving how we pay for things around. So going back to streets and roads, the original five-year plan had we had had uh if we not done the triple flip, measure Q would have paid for streets and roads this year and we would have split the streets and roads costs over the next five, four years between measure G and measure Q. This year, we're able to do the same amount, excuse me, with the triple flip this year, we would be able to do the same amount of streets focusing just on measure Q. So the council, I will remind the council and the public this year, our staff, thank you. Um, the, as we move forward, we came to the council in January and February of this year and asked, hey, what are your priorities? Where do we need to make sure we're funding this year? Uh, and we, and the council came up with about two and a half million dollars in initiatives, all of which I think are are very um appropriate initiatives. Clean up San Bruno is about one point four million dollars. It's really to go out and deal with some of the ugliness that is in our city at times from people doing illegal dumping, dealing with things like graffiti and graffiti debating, maintaining our rights of way, better public education, better investment in enforcement issues, which would include, I'd include a force supervisor position. And this is gonna take a lot of work and a lot of effort. And Chief, interim chief Van Heimer will tell you, in partnership with the public works director, the community development director, the community services director, the level of effort it took to clean up what we did a couple of weeks ago was massive. And some of you know, the dumping is bad. If you happen to go to the seventh and, well, not the seventh, the, you, seventh and all of it again, subservient. It's just gonna take this level of effort to stay on top of this through various enforcement measures. This is something I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that the council will continue to support. Uh, communications and engagement. Communications and engagement plan, just quite a $100,000 initiative. And this is really to make sure we are telling our story to the residents, to the voters, the taxpayers of San Bruno. And you're going about through the various social media channels, because relying on traditional media just really isn't going to work anymore. So how do you make sure we're telling that story, getting it right? There is a number of times that council members, each of you will send me stories, things you read on social media, things you see on various websites, that just aren't accurate. And we just don't have to, we don't have a proper approach on how to address that. And frankly, it's a head of it. So the $100,000 investment in communications and engagement plan, again, I think is a very good idea. Phase two of the RO streetlight retrofit project, you know, this, the council will be reminded that you brought this forward, that you collectively brought this forward as an idea. This was basically replacing the remaining RO streetlights in the city on the heels of the ones going to be placed in the current year. We can have a conversation about this with regards to the necessity to do this right away versus looking at potentially waiting. Now, and that, excuse me, the Public Works Director, Matt Lee, will be able to explain this in more detail if you'd like to hear more about it. But again, this was really on the heels of the good, we did, replacing the failing RO streetlights. And these RO streetlights are actually not failing. They are function, they are fully functioning. The residential park, private parking program, you know, parking is a third grail topic in our city. I've said this before. I'd say it a little bit tongue-in-cheek. It's a very, very tough conversation to have. Council knows you have an existing RPPP. And for whatever reason, it has not been successfully utilized by the neighborhoods or by the public. Council asked us, set monies aside to look at it again, to ask what can be done differently. And we're assuming that's going to be about a quarter million dollar investment, put it outside. A consulting firm coming in to help us kind of reexamine the existing program and figure out what we can do differently. And finally, as a look at our city-owned properties, this is about a $100,000 initiative. And this is really just asking the question, you know, is the real estate the city owns, is it, are we using it to its highest and best use? And the easiest example I can look at is the CityNet building. No one will, well, it would be here soon. It's a, as council knows, it's a big piece of property. It's a big building. Is there a higher metro views on the corner of Taylor and the San India El Camino? There probably is. But that then raises the question for our other sites. You know, is there something different that could be at, you know, say, the City Hall, the library, the Toppa House, and then the incorporation yard? And all of these will come into play. Again, it's a $100,000 investment. Then we will sort of bring this initiative back to the council to ask you, now, what are you going to do? So in summary, again, I committed to do this at a very high level with you. I've said this now three times. Your budget is balanced. We are facing strong economic headwinds. We are continuing to invest in quality and life issues for our residents, and we're continuing to support the workforce. So with that, I turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Nick Figaro, who's going to walk you through a little more of the detail of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Nick Figaro, City's Administrative Services Director and Chief Financial Officer. So just to kick it off, I want to start by identifying the process and how we arrived at the budget document that was submitted to council for consideration this evening and subsequently at your next meeting. We start the, we start building the budget based on feedback that we received from the council during your strategic or your goal-setting session or your annual retreat. One of the fundamental pieces that the council takes, gives direction on at that meeting and subsequently adopts our budget principles, which I'll go into in a second. Once we have our budget principles without the goal setting, they also have city council's top priority initiatives. And the direction to staff is that those top priority initiatives are funded in the budget that we bring to you in June. We then look at our revenue per scale budgets, looking at trends, challenges, headwinds, all of the good stuff on revenue side. And then also on our personnel side, we have the increases of wages. We then, you know, focus on long-term range, long-range investments. So these are our capital, this is our capital improvement program. And then finally, when we are culminating the budget process or looking to balance the budget, we have, over the past couple of years, we've used a strategy of using one-time revenue for one-time expenditures. So we have a one-time revenue reserve and we move one-time expenditures into that. What that does is it helps with inter-period or inter-period comparability, comparing year-over-year changes in budgets and baseline budgets when we need to look at, when we need to look. In the event that we need to look at the budget more critically. So just for quickly, budget principles are divided into three buckets. First, our financials. Second, focus on capacity, the building organizations, so this is our people. And then finally, communications. I'm not going to go into these in depth, but I wanted to just remind council that in summary, they focus on ensuring the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city, focusing on, again, financial elements, but also recognizing that personnel is a, and capacity is critical in terms of bringing services. Just by way, on our budget timeline, we kicked off in October of '24, and you see all of the different steps we took to get to tonight's budget. You'll see that that red bar popped up there, that was in May, when we realized that there was significant threat to, and highly likely that we would not perceive the VLF in the backfill this year. What that caused, what that set in motion is the staff really reset the budget in about a month. Looking at going from a reasonable, or recently balanced budget, or from a balance that could be, from a budget that could be recently balanced to a budget that it takes a little more time. We did that in about a month. So then we started with the general fund budget deficit as a result of the VLF in the backfill, $3 million. Coincidentally, around the same time, we received the proposal from the San Bruno Community Foundation to help fund, to provide a service-structured one-time grant to fund Station 52. We also looked at our revenue expenditure, reevaluated and focused on Measure G, I'm sorry, Measure Q eligible expenditures as well as Measure G eligible expenditures. And we arrived at the triple flip, which balances the budget, any cuts to services or initiatives, and expands services in a number of ways. And then finally, once we have the triple flip, we issued the budget book about three weeks ago to provide all of the opportunity to review and ask questions regarding the document and where, and the messages contained in there. Because we did introduce the triple flip, we did take this, we did take the triple flip for Measure G spending plan back to the Revenue Measures Oversight Committee in May. And then we held a public workshop on the budget last week. And then we're here this evening, and the budget will hopefully wrap up at the next council meeting. So just looking at all funds, I just recap what the city manager mentioned. We have 49 different funds. For those who may not be familiar with the fund, with funded accounting funds, or can very similar, could be considered or be interpreted as separate sort of entities, organizations, companies, that all sort of follow up into the total city budget. We have, we have several different types of funds. And the reason I'm walking through this is to hopefully address concerns that may, or questions that may come up in subsequent slides. And we have general funds, which, which, the, what we talk about mostly, and because it provides almost all of the tax funding, funded services to the community, we talk mostly about the general fund. But there are multiple general funds. We have the general fund, and we have Measure Q, which is, I'm sorry, Measure G, which is also a general fund. And then we have our three reserve funds, which are all general funds. We have a number of enterprise funds, water, wastewater, CityNet, parking, and stormwater. We have multiple special revenue funds, which I would focus on. In terms of the operations of the city, we have Recreation and Aquatic Centers. It's a special fund as well as community development. We also have impact fees, benefit funds, and then grants, restricted revenues. We have our capital funds. And then finally, we have our internal services, which help support the organization. Everything from information technology to fleet leaders. So when we look at our total city budget across all funds, all 49 funds, totals $287 million. You'll see that the single largest portion of the budget is, is priced to be enterprise funds, water and wastewater substantially. These are two very large enterprises that have operating expenditure, operating revenue and expenditure. And it also, and the enterprises also have long-term capital investments that it funds through ratepayers. And you still see the general funds in total are 76.4 million. And again, this goes to the other fund, the other general funds that are out there. Capital project funds, special revenue funds, finish out sort of the. When it comes to, because we are a service-based organization, when it comes to our workforce, you can see that of all, again, this is all 49 funds, the Public Works, as it maintains the two largest enterprise, the water and wastewater, has the largest number of employees, followed by police, fire, and then community services. Here's a breakdown here of the numbers by, by, by funds. I do want to highlight one very, or two very important pieces here, three very important pieces. You'll see that with the exception of the general fund and internal service funds, revenues exceed expenditures. Those are, that's a balanced budget. The other funds are also balanced, and the revenues are less than the expenditures, because each of these funds are expected to behave in a slightly different ways. Special revenue funds, we may collect money in one year and spend it in the future year. The capital project funds, we put money into capital project funds with the expectation of spending those funds down to zero. So expenditures are often, often exceed revenues as capital project funds. And then you'll see the big number in our enterprise funds. Again, it's similar, similar to the capital project funds. This, these are monies that the ratepayers have contributed to the water, wastewater fund primarily, funds primarily. And we're doing ambitious capital program, investment capital investments. So now I'm going to move to the general fund singular, which does include Measure G, the reserves. And again, the reason we focus on this fund in particular is because this is where the vast majority of the city's discretionary funding, revenues, and expenditures are reported. Of the $69 million budget, about 65% of the budget is priced taxes with sales and property tax and sales tax being the larger shares. We do have charges for services. I do want to highlight the significance of using the property at 8%. This is considerably more significant than prior factors, because we have aggressive and pursuing higher interest rates on funds that are not corporations. So where do the tax revenues come from? I just mentioned we have our, the air sales tax, our business license taxes. And then you'll see there, off to the, in the lime green section, you'll see the VLF tax. Again, this is a service organization. 73% of the general fund budget is for the fund salaries, the benefits, internal charges, support those operations, and operating is everything from paper, paper, paper flips to utilities. Just for a quick overview of how the general fund is allocated, the two largest pies, slices of the pie are the safety departments. And the next largest slice is the non-partential work, which is substantially the unfunded pension liability payments that is not attributed to this department. So with the overview of all funds and the general funds, I just want to talk for a moment about some of the changes that the council and the members of the public have seen in the, in this budget document. The first is that the budget document does include Measure G and Measure Q reevaluations or truth that the city manager has discussed. We do have items in the use of one-time expenditures, using one-time revenue reserves. And then we have our city councils, we have the top priority initiatives budgeted in city council. And I have received a couple of questions about why this, why this budgeting changed this year. And the, the, this, there are a couple of different ways that we can account for the priority initiatives. I think the first is to keep them in an account by themselves. They stand alone and they don't become part of our annual routine of, of, of budget base point. They don't become part of the budget base point. And that can be, that can be achieved in one of two ways. You can put it in a department that doesn't have tremendous flexibility, fluctuation, which is city council budget. There are alternatives. If the council desires to change that and create a new sort of program that would capture the initiatives, the other, the other possibility is to make make them into the operating budget, which then gets, when we look at inter-period comparability, becomes a bit complex. Our shows to do more research and remember what happened last year, whereas keeping it in a separate fund or separate program, or in a program with less fluctuation, it stands out. One thing, while it's sounding budget changing, is we want to highlight that we are, that CityNet is remaining as a separate fund. We are, we're bringing the sales prices of CityNet in the CityNet fund. Once CityNet finally closes, we will come back to the council, ask the council, give you a recommendation on where, how, whatever monies are remaining, which happened to them. And seek your guidance and approval on what to do with any remaining funds, including sale prices. Wanted to, one of, one of the areas that I focus on by attention quite a bit is the structural changes to our budget. These are things that are going, that will continue in perpetuity unless we make a decision in the future to defund the program. The first line that you see there is there's a structural expenditure, one thing to 5 million, one and 1/4 million. This takes into account half of what the council were receiving. So this number will decrease just a bit. The only lending source that we have right now for this, like two, five, no, one thing, $1 million, let's just say that. This $1 million subsidy is the general fund. And so when we look at the RAC and subsidy for the RAC, just as it was prior to the RAC or the old Recreation Center, the RAC is competing for a limited pot of general fund money. Or rather, choosing to, I apologize. The RAC requires to, so unlimited general funds. One of the other things is we do have parking fund. We talked about the, about the loan, the restructuring of the loan. We're rejecting the parking fund with the security deficit. With the changes the council has made to the program, we're, we're we're making several estimates, but they, but right now, if you look at the budget document, there's a very, there's a hair thin surplus of about $6,000 based on the information and assumptions we've used. So any changes that we make to, any changes that have been made, partly the fund, we don't really know how that will pan out. But at the end of the day, if there is a need to backfill, the general fund is the backfill. There's about $1 million of cleanup San Bruno that's ongoing effort. If you recall, it was about 1.4. about one point four six million, uh, in the city manager's presentation about that is is one time, uh, to help address the uh high, high fire hazards, area zones, very few. Uh, we are the unfunded state mandate, we are asking for a new FTE and the deputy fire marshal, and the the uh budget includes funding for that position in measure G. Um, council recalls last year that we modified the fee structure, the revenue, the cost recovery structure for the July enforcement and education. Uh, and the chief and I had had a very quick conversation uh about the sort of the posture that our county is taking if I were a mutual aid, and if there are questions related to that, I'm sure the chief can answer that, but we are, we're, we're including in what we have included in the budget, uh, eighty thousand dollars to pick up costs above and beyond whatever is reimbursed by the uh by the booth and permit. And then finally, new structural expenditures, we have associates, I've seen two, two FTEs, uh, one associate, one senior engineer, uh. The costs for these engineers are offset by project charge bills, so um are also very relevant. Charge bills. So in addition to uh our structural, I also want to highlight the new one-time on the term expenditures. Uh, so one time, uh, mostly funded, all funded by by, for the most part funded by measure G, uh, we have um the balance of the, or most of the uh community, uh, sorry, council priority initiatives, um, their, the measure G committee, um, supported the uh the uh these items, uh, including the use of measure G for the regulated output streetlight retrofit program, which is a three-year program and six hundred thousand dollars per year, and also supporting the uh critical special projects manager, three-year term or contract position, uh, that would help advance the that center pillar of the, that's the budget principles, which focuses the staff development, organizational efficiencies, and uh and creating and becoming an employer trust. Um, put free of our one-time revenue reserve expenditures, uh, lots, there's, there are several uh items of equipment for our public safety uh departments. Uh, you may recall last year that I had identified to be pension obligation on debt service as a possibility to pay off so that we could free up operating expenditure, operating monies for regular operations. Uh, we did not, there was no advantage prepaying, uh, so we uh included for the second year, um, the final, the second to final, one one game enough, twenty-six, uh, using big one-time revenue reserve. And then uh one-time revenues are also one of our few resources for general capital revenue. So in summary, uh, just revering some of the comments that the city manager and they has made, uh, the services are maintained and expanded and included priority and initiatives, uh, they're funded. Um, we have uh the overall budget for the different types of funds, and there are two hundred eighty-seven employees, uh, with those new positions listed, listed there. And over that, I think got to our assistance and skin agenda right now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Brian Adams, City Manager. I just wanted to give a brief overview of our capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. So what is the capital improvement program? Basically, spent a little bit of time talking about both the operational and the capital budget, but the operational budget is basically what we do to keep things running in the city on a daily basis. So if a storm drain is clogged with weeds, clearing that would be an operational expense, but if you wanted to map out the condition of all storm drains, that would be a capital expense or capital project. And the capital projects that, well, this program are not only things that we use and see every day, like streets, those storm drains, the pipes that bring water to our homes, or the pipes that take the water out of our homes. Uh, it also covers the technology that city staff use to provide those services on a daily basis. And for the CIP document, basically for now, maybe getting it as part of the budget, our CIP this year begins with an executive summary, that just provides a high-level overview of the money that's being recommended by the city manager to spend, is that the capital improvement program? It also covers some of the funds that are being allocated, uh, whether those are from one-time revenue reserves, from grants, from different kinds of impact funds, and as administrative services director mentioned, a lot of the projects that are recommended for enterprise funds like water program and the wastewater program come out of the funds that ratepayers pay. So those funds are used to keep the systems running, and then they're invested back into the system to kind of maintain and invest in that infrastructure. And basically, in this document, each project is their own page, each ongoing or proposed project is their own page, provides a narrative on that project, as well as things like when that project's officially funded, when we intend to clean it, updating those intended completion dates, if it doesn't, if we end up needing to use more time, as well as how much money has been allocated for that project, spent so far, and if we haven't allocated what we think we might do for that project, anticipate a future request for that project. And then beyond that, basically, the breakdown of what's being allocated to those projects. So usually, what's included in these tables are basically one-time funds, grants, and stuff like that. So, you know, third time, fourth time is the charm, but some of the projects that are completed in this year, things like the recreation and aquatic center, other things ranging from wild park mitigation, as well as things like protected bike lanes along Underground Avenue, as well as lots of street paving, and as uh city engineer, which you mentioned, things like green water, green stormwater infrastructure, and that was like built into uh the rack, as well as, you know, as you come to council every night, you'll notice that the intersection of City Park Way and Crystal Space Boulevard used to be a stop sign intersection, now it's a signalized intersection, another capital project was completed. So just another small way into these kind of capital projects are, you know, transforming, separate all around us, and we had a member of the community come and talk about, you know, maybe this road by my house is never going to pay, but here it's paying, and we see like sidewalks along Warden Avenue, the street along Warden Avenue also being picked. So lots of different kinds of capital investments happening all around the city. But writing here, just a high-level financial summary of the capital improvement program at the top, it's basically just the budget that we have for the fiscal year for last year's budget. After that, the money that we spent, and the money that we estimate that we bring over, and then second to last line, the money that we are basically requesting or recommending that we spend or add to next year's program, the final line is basically, but that budget total is around one hundred thirty-seven million dollars. And again, uh, further breakdown of the program, basically, each of those individual programs ranging from facilities all the way down to water, and uh this is also available inside the capital program section of the budget posted online. And in summary, lots of work that's always happening around the city, and I think, as has been mentioned by the city manager and the administrative services director, uh, despite those budget challenges and all the backflips and accounting gymnastics that have been done, we're working hard to make sure that we're investing in those capital improvement program, uh, capital improvement budgets around the city, and uh many, many projects that were completed this past year, and as you know, in each of your city council meetings, there's often something coming to the consent calendar to improve the completion of a project. And with that said, I will hand it back over to City Manager McIntyre. Keep going.
So, next steps, um. We will be back to you with the budget on January, excuse me, June twenty-fourth, you just, you know, this is officially the handoff from the city manager's budget, and now it becomes the city council's budget. And any, anything you do to the budget is now at at your discretion and at your leisure. Um, again, the budget is balanced, and any actions or changes we're asking if you make to the budget, if you're going to take to a takeaway, that's fine, because you can always have a surplus, but if you're going to do add something, you may need to find a way of paying for it. So you can pay for it by eliminating something else in the budget, or um you can pull money out of reserves, but please do so, or I would say, if you're going to do that, make sure it's a one-time um request. Uh, the next steps, you know, today, obviously, you guys did the master fee schedule, which was very helpful, um, helped sort of make the budget balance even better, June twenty-fourth will be the whole public hearing on the budget and uh city council adoption, this bunch of, council will remember, there's a bunch of enabling resolutions that are attached to it as well. So when we say adopt the budget, I think you guys adopted like six resolutions to to do the actual uh adoption, July first is the beginning of our fiscal year, and really want to thank a lot of people who invested their time and energies to make sure this this budget is the right budget for the council, and I want to give a shout out to Brian Adams. Uh, as you know, we hired Brian to be my assistant to the city manager, and he was stolen about two weeks later, and we assigned him to the budget for a variety of reasons, and he's really shined and and sort of becoming much more aware of our operations and whatnot, and he's the guy to thank, whether you love it or hate it, this document and stuff that he created. So, you know, thanks, Brian, thanks to the whole team, this was a huge team effort, and as Nick mentioned earlier, you know, come May, we had a balanced budget, but suddenly the, you know, states were curveball at us, and so we had to rebalance with the, you know, the three million dollar deal at Blue. Uh, the team, my team came together and performed, you know, tremendously. So again, this is a, this is a huge team effort, and it goes on sadly for about nine months. We'll get a little break, but we'll start there again in October again, so um, again, thanks to everyone. Uh, recommendation tonight is you can accept this as is, of course, but if you want to make any changes, uh, please do so, and we're in that spot, and I I briefed the mayor a little bit on, if there are going to be a list of things to change, we're going to ask you to vote on each one of those to make sure that council is to be in a majority of ways supportive of it all, and that is the um, the code, if you want to uh scan it to uh have the budget uploaded to your uh device. So, open to questions, you may have a lot, you may have none, we'll see, we'll see how this works tonight. And my whole team is here tonight to answer technical questions, and particularly during into the department budgets. So thank you all, uh, thank you, council, for your patience for forty-two and a half minutes. Thank you very much, uh, to everyone who had a part in this and the presentations. Seeing questions on the presentation.
Awesome. Um, comments? School of final question, yes, I just want one brief question, so um, obviously, uh, all of us who are um customers of Comcast, will be, our, our, CityNet will be, Comcast is Comcast in the city, central nodes, no exception there. So are all the internet charges that we're expecting to start paying for, to get free, are those rolled into all of the individual department budgets all over the place, or are they called out somewhere that I missed?
So they, thank you, Councilman Hamilton, the um, we're still in the process of gathering the quotations for the transition either to Comcast for another provider. Um, the budget does include two hundred fifty thousand dollars of centralized charge in technology that then gets allocated out to the other departments based on their devices and their use, their use of the technology service.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, we're seriously considering not having Comcast as our provider?
I think our due diligence is to make sure that we get as many quotes as we can, uh, and, you know, that it's just part of our practice.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Other comments, uh, council member offers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with the beginning of the presentation, um, we have a standard amount, I budgeted for one point four six million, followed with this thing, with one point of the uh amount for one point, one full time employee for enforcement officer, and the other needs also in the list. Um, but then further on, the um, the presentation, I noticed that um for the fiscal year twenty-six, for new structural expenditures, the cleanup standard now ongoing effort, um, now went down to one million. So which part of, you know, the um, the budgeted amount was allocated towards the employee enforcement, sir?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Ramirez, the um, the code, so the, the slides, the second slide that you're referencing was the ongoing costs, and off, off the top of my head, the co-enforcement officer was somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars, that one, of that one, uh, the balance is in contract services to do all of the uh, all of the maintenance and services that that needed to be provided. The next slide uh in the deck, if I remember correctly, has the one-time for sort of the startup, which is the balance of the one, which gets you, adding the two together gets you to the first. So it's going to be slide forty plus uh and slide thirty-nine.
Very, very nice. This is the.
Comments? So, um, a clarification, going back to uh, measure QG, general fund contortions that are proposed in here, um, it shows that over a five-year period, if I'm reading this correctly, thirty million overall, through the first flip, forty million, and we'll see the next flip, and ends up being seventeen point five million, going to the general fund, um, for this budget, how much of that money is thrown into the general?
So, in the staff report on page um two thirteen in the packet, uh, table two, lists three point eight six million from how measure G money is being used for what historically may have been discouraged.
Three point six million, correct. And the, the budget is balanced, but about twenty million is at risk, and uh we're offsetting some of that risk with that four million dollars, but the rest of it pays. And I, I, I'm focusing on that because, you know, the budget, um, it it's sort of, the the demands grow dynamically, whether we do absolutely nothing, that number goes up, everything gets more expensive, and it goes up. But there are portions of this that we do have control over, and we are enhancing services. Uh, so with, with the risks to being able to pay for this, um, I have to sort of pause and think, so is this really the right time to be adding to the budget, uh, rather than sort of taking a more conservative approach and saying, okay, um, we may not be able to pay our bills, um, later this year, so maybe we shouldn't be adding things else, these things were imposed on us. Um, but from a philosophy of, you know, how do we deal, how do we mitigate that risk? Uh, it doesn't really seem there's any way to mitigate, these things could happen, uh, there's probably very little that we can do to control them. Um, so with, with the potential that we could be in a situ, and it's happened to us before, and we've been in a situation before where we think, all right, straight, we're off to the races, and then uh less than six months later, we're in a two million, three million, four million dollar deficit. Uh, so, I, I, what, what can you say to make me feel better about this?
A couple of things, I can, this is more high-level philosophical, right? And and council members, or I think you're asking that high-level philosophical question. Something I touched on, one of the council's five initiatives is placing the balance of the armed streetlights, and it's a one point eight billion dollar initiative. Something I touched on, one of the council's five initiatives is replacing the balance of the R O streetlights, and it's a one point eight billion dollar initiative. And it was an initiative that came from the dice, it was not a staff-recommended initiative. And to remind the council that the R O streetlights we replaced this current year were the ones that failed. They were out, they were broken, and we replaced them. The next round of replacements is to replace streetlights that are fully functioned. They are not broken, they are not breaking. They have to to um a public works director of Malley's comment to me today was, in his tenure here, they've never gone out. They never fail. So we may be replacing something that we don't need to replace. You're shaking your head.
Well, yeah, and in my tenure, I've seen two outages in neighborhoods that lasted months.
But but the new system, system that's that's the balance, or that system that we.
But but they're all the same age, so it's, for me, it's not a matter of will they fail, it's a matter of when will they fail? And when they do fail, are we going to be ready to respond to it, or will the neighborhood be even darker for months?
So I'm gonna let Max step up here, no, 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 this is totally fair, I mean, this is totally fair and legitimate questions, and and I think from staff's point of view, we were curious around. Was there a a, again, they they have not, the hundred and fifty remaining R O streetlights to Max. Thank you, I'm gonna speak for you, but then I'm gonna hand it back to you. Um they haven't failed in his five years since he's been here. Now, might they fail in the future? Sure. The ones we just saw may fail in the future, I mean, they they are prone to failure, given their exposure to the elements, et cetera. I think the one point eight million dollars, my interpretation from the moment the council came up with this was. Oh, we're gonna replace the rest of the ones that fail. These have not shown any indication they're going to fail. There's no timings to it, and I also want, a positive comment will be, given that we now know the solar lights do work, and they are. Good substitutes, and that's what we are going to do through this replacement process, was start that replacement with solar lights. So we now know it works, you know, in order them relatively quickly, we can, we can store them relatively quickly, in the sense that we can start replacing accordingly. So I guess my my comment on all this is the urgency question, do we need to do this now? And my argument would be back to the philosophy of, oh, are we getting ahead of ourselves? That might be something we choose to to shop. Public Works Director Lee, did I, did I miss anything?
Uh good evening, uh mayor, council, public works director, thanks for speaking to you. Four hours, continue, whatever. I was waiting to tell them earlier, but uh city manager, Matt Tires, Rex, I think. The any infrastructure that we have has the ability to fail, uh and we know the. The R O streetlights are not like any modern system, so they have a higher propensity to fail. But the during my tenure here, and I checked in with our streets and storm superintendent, she knows. When the remaining R O streetlights that are out, that are, that have not yet been replaced. We, so I remember, we can trace back to when those locations have failed, although they ended fifteen years ago. And so there, if I recall correctly, out of the five R O circuits that we have, the one most far failed. For one thing here, and I think they replaced until apparently, and since then, knock on wood, most of the lights have been unoperational. So from our professional opinion, they might not be something that we need to replace now. If fun, if the funding needs that they prioritize should be managed. Like city manager said, as part of our original project, we did purchase a couple of spares. Just to, you know, to anticipate that whenever it happens again, neighbors that we get replaced. Um we can, we can look at those spares, look at other options and see maybe how we can have some readily available. So when it comes out, I can bring it back, I'll find out the multiple places. We can, we already have the, some of the spares ready to put off into the day for a, for the time being, as opposed to what we went through. For past couple of years, whether it's out, lost, or out.
I think what's unique about these is that when when the streetlight goes out, it's not just one streetlight, the the series goes out, so all of them know how. And it 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 becomes from a small task of replacing a bulb to now replacing an entire system. And uh you know, in general, in the past, I've never really pushed a lot of things at at the council priority meetings. But you know, I I think this year was an exception for me, and a lot of things I brought forward, this one in particular was important. Because it was one of those that had always said, yeah, we need to do that at some point, but it just never happened. And so I I at at some point, we have to say, yeah, we're gonna fund it, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it. So I was really afraid that it would just, we would just keep kicking the can down, like we did before, and you know, we have to have.
Uh through the, the mayor, um or like act for details. So all the streetlight circuits that we recently replaced are the largest. So out of those one hundred fifty lights, that was, that was a two R O circuits. The remaining one hundred twenty, they're broken out, it's five different R O circuits. So a concern is that one circuit breaks, blows, all the lights go out. We're talking about order of magnitude, oh, twenty lights in each circuit, or or the highest, sorry, they range from. Twenty-four lights to thirty-seven lights each circuit. So we already have spares in there, we might, we might, you know, I don't believe we have, you know, thirty-seven spares, but we do have enough that we can. Mitigate the blackouts if we can make repairs immediately. Alternating, maybe like fifty percent of the lights up, that's why we're utilizing spares. So operationally, I think we can um mitigate the blackouts if we can make immediate repairs. The challenge we have with other R O supply systems is because they constantly were blacking out. Every time you have a failure, begin the wiring in the system, and so it accelerates. Because the lights that we have now, they haven't, I haven't seen them during my tenure blackout, the the. To our knowledge, last time they blacked out was about ten, fifteen years ago. I wouldn't call any of those smaller circuits. We don't believe that they're, they're, the wiring, there is as frail as the other circuits that were recently replaced. Also, they're in the lower parts of San Bruno, uh and there's not as much groundwater going through those areas. Um and also, two out of the five circuits from Health Community Al, so we really put uh uh. Uh some of our circuits, and then we probably would have to work with Caltrans to make sure they allow us to use those standards. So even if we're basically still have Caltrans, not like we can just slap those lights up right.
Okay, all right, well, I'm glad we're having a conversation, glad there's some, some plan in place. I think that would be the worst thing, if we just, if we knew there was a problem, and. Thank you for that that additional information, and I I do concede that, you know, there are probably other projects within here that we could defund, shouldn't have utilized. Uh and to that point, I I did notice that we were funding additional money there to cover. Uh on Fourth of July expenses, and being that that's coming up. I know that when topic came up before around the fees, there was at least some discussion among the council about. Do we continue to provide the same level of support now that we lost that funding source? And I think historically, the reason we did provide that was because we had a funding source, and absent that funding source. I I do believe we need to have a conversation on what is appropriate for us to do.
It's late, so I'll leave it at that here. Can I just address two more things that you that you brought up? So one was expenses, again, two sides of the coin, right, the other one is revenues. In the state legislative, state legislative budget, which is not the governor's budget, right? The state legislature does their thing, they have funded the L F, so that's. But it's not approved, to be clear. It's it's in the budget, we 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 don't know if the governor has the authority to redline. Uh or to line up, line, line out a veto item, we just don't know. And so if it is in, and interestingly, and I'm not going to detail on this, this is the most convoluted revenue source we get, but it's. Actually funding the current year, because there are always a year behind. So but nonetheless, that three million is still at risk. But there's a little glimmer of hope that maybe it'll go through, maybe the governor will sign it, and maybe we'll get our money for the current year. Really, and and to the to the council member's point, these are always going to be at risk for us. We're always facing this uncertainty, which is just very, very frustrating. Our second comment will be another one of our funding sources at risk, we had a close session on. Right, about the C D T F A, without going into details, because I can't, but. You know, we we did talk about what do we do about that sort of funding source as well, and is there a way of creating a level of certainty there? And I'll, you know, kind of speaking in code, then trying to get an S H to buy it. Uh with regards to maybe there's a way of addressing all that, but again, it is still at risk.
To the mayor, yeah, back on the the R O, um I have a. It's half question and half suggestion of maybe how to split it a little bit on it. The. Maybe these these headlines, these risks, the V L F, the U R F, and all of it. Somewhere during the fiscal year, we'll know if it happened or not. So could we at least just not start that project until those things happen? And then they, you know, all of a sudden, we find out, oh, geez, T D S L B O is seven million for V L F. Then come back to us and say, maybe, maybe we do need to place this up right here, or whatever, just kind of just time it?
Yeah, so the V L F, yes, um but the other ones are really city and state courts, so we don't be, like, the C D T F A is state court issue.
Well, I I wouldn't.
Right, right, so but but V L F, yes, we could, we probably won't know. The governor has to, governor like this has to have the adopted budget by June third, in our first meeting, it's on June twenty-four. Governor Spel has six more days, six more days following that to adopt or not adopt. We may know more in two weeks. Um with regards to V L F, and we can certainly kind of do a contingency budgeting, as it were. Again, we solved the balance at the end of the day, that's our big concern, so.
So I think, I mean, I think, I I'm okay with leaving it in there, because we have the flexibility later, if we get some, if we get something that needs to be, I'd say, okay. That's what it is. Yeah, exactly, what you want to make. Okay, the.
Yes, thank you, and uh thank you all for staying here for four-plus hours now. And um thank you for all the work we did in the budget, thanks to uh. It's always an interesting time of year, as in trying to determine priorities and where we're gonna land. I have a number of problems concerning all of those. I have discussed these, a number of funding preferences with the city manager, what was, and kind of the what's missed in this of all of our time. Um I can kind of give a, I'll attempt to make a brief of council initiatives, of. After thinking about it more, what I am more in favor of, or when I'm not. As as I mentioned, um I'll I'll do the easier ones first, uh city-owned properties. I'm in favor of that. We just talked about a residential apartment program, I'm kind of wavering on that, I'm not really sure if this is the right time. Uh with the cost and and um the base two, we've heard some good um comments on the necessity. Because clearly, when the lights go out, that's one of the most basic services that we need to have, and we. Be able to quickly move to get, to getting on the size of the R O circuits. Which one goes out first is the one we're fixed, right? So we could, we could replace a number of circuits, and then another one breaks, right? So having them in reserve, and how much, how many of them can we have in reserve, and how much do we think we can put them up on a permanent basis? And while we're talking about streetlights, um I did actually look it up. We have um six hundred and eighty streetlight poles that were being in need of replacement in December of twenty twenty-three. And we only replaced thirty-one poles, so it's a matter of like, what need do you drill? And the streetlight poles, we're difficult to take into that group, right? Because we, you had no budget for facing with any of them last year, and so um it's something to keep in mind. Um as for the Fourth of July budget, yeah, when we had a big source of income that was capped at seven percent. We kept on doing more, and that budget went bigger and bigger and bigger, until where the amount that we're asking now, eighty thousand, was more of the budget that we had a couple of years ago. For policing, I believe, from the summary that I thought I saw, but you know, staff took into that. And then at some certain point, you know, what is the best thing to the budget? And I think we've heard at one point that maybe we're gonna send a mailer, and that was, I don't believe, thousands, six thousand. Send a mailer, this point, did that mailer, they just go away. So um where could we, you know, fine tune that and and talk about that at another time, and I don't know if we want to do that now. For the community communications and engagement, I was in favor of that, but. When I was in favor of that, I also really wished for a citywide survey to be included, and now I don't see that in there. And we need to do these surveys so we know where we stand on various issues that concern them. We, one hasn't been done, or we only do them when we're looking to um. See if we're gonna pass a bond measure or some other type of revenue increase. But what I, I think it's important, and it's it's not too expensive, I think during the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range. So um I wanted to see if that is still gonna be in here, because it's not listed in one of the side. And then the the hot spot cleanup, as much as I would like to see that, is that the most important thing to do right now? And then that brings us to the part of the point that is, is code enforcement in the rental department? Should it be in the building department, and this is things I did for the resident city manager. How we have a building official, a deputy building official, a deputy building official oversees two inspectors, I believe. And in other departments, and when I worked here, the code enforcement was in the building department, and it was overseen by a building official. But now San Bruno has a deputy building official, so it seemed like it'd be. A possible way of looking at that, and perhaps not having to hire another uh code enforcement officer. And I say that because since, I believe we've heard back once on the metrics of what code enforcement is doing. And somehow or another, it 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 kind of um was off the side here. And so um I have questions about that and the effectiveness of it. And I do appreciate the things five, I believe, noted parts of that program. And I'm in favor of those going forward, but I still haven't heard back yet. How much have we spent on cleanups on from city, city funds? And we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar program, if I'm correct. Uh for payment, and it's like, I'm I'm not interested in paying for Caltrans, Caltrans responsible. So I I'm not sure where we where we are with that, so I'm not sure at this point. So um those are at least of our initiatives that I'm talking about. Have questions about the city police radios, like where is that project, it's a great big project. I think there's about four and a half million dollars allocated there, and it's like, that's, where are we with the new workers' projects? But um we didn't go through it page by page, and and I I like that, but at the same point. Putting updates on where these various projects are, and the benefits of it, and. My usual, I handle the city manager's, is additional funding for um speed hubs or sidewalk repair. We didn't have a program, it sounds like for two years, and then is that gonna be enough money? Planting trees, uh we now have confirmed information that. Uh the east side of San Bruno has the smallest tree canopy in the city of. Um that's, I think, by a factor of three. So um I just wanted to continue sharing that with the city manager, Rex, and with with my colleagues, so. So when we go to the next meeting, like. Where are we gonna be able to land this budget, where wanna be able to support? And and here for my colleagues, I'm having unified um base of support for all these things that they're doing. But I also want to make sure that um a couple of the other issues that I had, obviously will be addressed or talked about, so. No, in the time I want to spend too much on it, but there's, there's a lot of other stuff in there, so how can we answer that, you know? There would be a couple more hours, probably. Thank you.
So, again, to reiterate, it's now the council's question. This is among the five of you to decide what you want to do with all this, all these, the things that both council members have brought up and Vice Mayor Medina just brought up. And then again, there may be more, and that's why we do this, exactly, so why we have these conversations. Um, uh, Vice Mayor Medina did share with me some of these observations earlier, um. The council's call, we're gonna do it, and I mentioned, I advised them earlier today that as these things come up, and if there's an add or a delete. They all just need to tell us what the add or delete is, again, as long as we still balance for five. So, I mean, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items here that Vice Mayor Medina brought up. And, you know, I I might, I I guess I understand moving code enforcement from one department to the other. Do you think it's instead of having the additional code enforcement person? Uh, but our observation was no matter where code enforcement is, I will argue that, and. Or strongly argue that I still think we need more code enforcement effort. We're doing a couple of very heavy lifting cases right now that are consuming. A lot of resources, and this is why I think code enforcement, when it works. It's a big deal, it just takes, it's a huge lift, I'm not even talking about the K I N A. Not even having that conversation, this is a whole different level of effort right now, and I think I want to thank, again, I think Inter Chief Manheimer for really. Getting us focused and and Trish Ortiz's attorney, I mean, their firm has been working diligently in a couple of code enforcement issues. We can choose to ignore a lot of these issues, but the sooner we address these things, the sooner we sort of just. Kind of bring up the feel of who San Bruno is, and we don't have to be the place that dumps couches and mattresses on our streets, we can be next city. But I think I've heard from all of them, we should be separately, no, we do not have to be next city. We have a program that we think will address that. Uh, it's a big lift because we've gotten. Comfortable allowing you to dump crap in our city. And whether it's our own residents or on Sanders, we all know, but we're we're gonna get better enforcement to figure that out, so. Anyway, I. Again, you have eight or nine items here that Councilmember, Vice Mayor Medina brought up, and the rest of you may have more items. And again, I will just report the mayor to, let's just go through the list and say, do you want these included or not included in the budget? And when we bring back the budget to you in two weeks, it will affect us. My argument is, and I'll remind Vice Mayor Medina last year. You sort of, your council jumped on you because you brought up the eleven hour, all these items, and they all said no, so it was the day of adoption. So tonight, tonight can do this, I got everyone here, we'll stay till midnight, one or two in the morning, to get through this list. This is important stuff, I I don't wanna, I don't pretend it's not, but that's why people are, you know, that's why we're sitting here tonight, to help you guys through this.
So, thank you, I, uh, I want to just, I want to go through the initiatives if I go. The Vice Mayor, and I'm sure he's a more fair. Opinion on each, I will spend a whole lot of time on on each one, but, um. As far as the cleanup San Bruno initiative, I don't think, uh, they were. Changing, you know. It's time, I don't like to be, yes. Um, the Vice Mayor is correct, that, you know, in some regards, we will, you know, we may end up paying for stuff that. Really, at the end of the day, we should be paying for. But, but, um, to me, that's not worth not doing. This is, this is an important initiative for the, for the community, and it's really time to stand up. Stand up as a city and say, we are not in place to kind of dump your shit, and just really have that. So, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing. Sorry, this fall. Um, under, for communications and engagement, I do agree. Uh, that it would be really good because as part of engagement, this survey. And, um, because that's, because that's not listed here, I would assume that adding a city, a citywide survey would add to this. Um, and in the spirit of that, I am also pro- uh, proposing a way to pay for that. And, um, the Vice Mayor believes this as well, and that would be to, um. Delay until next year, reassessing the residential property. So, um, as you all know, this is something I've worked on for almost a decade, since the very beginning. Um, there's been no, uh, official result from it. And the. You know, on the sub community, we've had a couple of meetings, I am not filled with confidence that we're going to come up with. And we've talked about, we talked about it, that it's very likely that we are spending this money so that we can finally say definitively. When people come and say, I want part of this, we'll be able to point to the study to say, this is why we're moving this up at all. Um, that's, I strongly believe that's the way to get out of this. And to, is it really super important that we do that, get the, get the outcome this year, given all other things? I don't necessarily. So, I would like to propose, um, that we, and then just to, just to finish going through. We, we already talked about the R O's, and I finally get on there. Going back, maybe come back and take it off again in in the future, if one of these, uh. If one of these catastrophes does take place. Um, we do absolutely need to do the analysis, city owned properties, um, and so I'm in favor of keeping that, so. My suggestion would be to add citywide survey to the communication engagement. And pay for it by delaying the R A P P reassessment.
Shouldn't have this discussion in this Asian plan session. The survey was something I was advocating for. As I recall, the discussion had went around, so if you do a survey, what is the survey? And to what candidate, I think we, we couldn't, we couldn't put our finger on exactly what would be asked in the survey. And that's why we kind of let that fall by the wayside, so. Would communication portion of those. Uh, be successful at doing, and I think that's kind of where that initiative landed. But as far as putting a, the block shell M R P here, uh, delaying, I'd be okay with that. We could use that funding for something else, I don't know that the survey is necessarily. We could have more discussion around, you know, what exactly that would look like, but. We would really need to flush that out if we decided to do that.
Where I see the value of doing the survey. Is, so when I, when I look at the, when I look at the, the the items here within the, the, uh. Uh, communication engagement plan, and we heard the summary about, you know, to be more engaging with social media. What I have found, um, and the reason that I started my newsletter, is that there are tons of people. Who avoid social media like today. Um, yes, I mean, yes, there, maybe there are tons of people who are on social media, and we absolutely should be doing all of these things. But there is a huge part of our population who do not know all those things, and they are completely, utterly forgotten. So being able to reach out to those people. Through a survey, ask them, what is the best way to get to, get you to listen to us? You know, have that be part of, have that be part of that, which is not a reach, how, what is it, how do you, how do you consume information? And, you know, it's so that we can tailor our communications, ask questions like that, but then of course, more basic questions. What were straight in San Bruno that you love, and what do you, what, where should we be putting more focus? Those, those basic questions, because we don't always have like that, yes, there's a lot of people who say, it was strange, yes. We know where to get things, but we don't know what, we don't know what we don't know, there's other things that people are worried about. And so those are the things that I think will be yet to, uh, proactively going out and and surveying. And and I would still argue that the broader the question, the less quality responses you're gonna get. Because if you just ask people, would you, hey? They could be all over the place. That was on the, the question with Peter, the types of questions, and obviously. We'll be paying for expert survey people to be able to, uh, crack those, crack those questions. Um, you know, we, certainly not gonna be the first municipality in, um, industry you've ever had a survey. We lost, the city's doing Salt Lake, I like this, PS model, actually.
It's interesting too that you mentioned one of the questions, could you, about how, how do people want to engage? City, we don't know how to engage, how do we get it served, you know, chicken, man, man, you know. Um, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I do see the value in. I gotta check into the, I just. I I wasn't, at the end of that conversation, it wasn't convinced that there was a way of effecting. That would really give us some valuable information.
Anyway, yeah. This fair, if I can address this a little bit, so, and I jumped on my computer, but. Um, yeah, we've done three surveys since twenty twenty, and in March of twenty twenty, you guys did a survey. In May of twenty twenty two, you did a survey, and then in September of twenty three, I remember when I first came here, I was pushing. What's the community think about this, about how we're doing, so we really did a community satisfaction survey, was what we did. And I don't think it was, I don't think we were intentional on this, asking a little bit polling question, we didn't do the polling until the following year. So the survey we did in, in, uh. The one I asked for, and you guys, you guys, uh, applied to me, was in September of twenty twenty three. And this, this was with, um. Did this, gotta be, probably gotta be, yeah. And I think I, somehow I, I was spending about thirty thousand dollars on this, and I think it did give you that. It gave me feedback that I wanted to know as the new city manager, but I believe it helped you guys as well, I think there was embedded in the survey. A, should we do a revenue measure? And we did embed that in the survey, it's a really high level sort of, and I think the answer was no. And then we went back and then we split it at close to closing, obviously that's the polling following year, we got better answers. Uh, so something I am gonna apologize about the slide we put up in the stack in the, in the budget itself. By no means did the community engagement initiative exclude a survey, that was never intentional. Uh, a survey, it's the right tool, you don't use it every year, you you do a survey about every two to three years, you check in and you want to do it. Off council cycles, you don't want to do it right before an election, you then that sort of feels overloaded, which is why doing it this fall. You know, could, could make the fall major or spring, could make some sense, if if you chose to do that, so. Doing a survey is is by no means, i- i- it is a best practice, checking with your residents. Um, you do it in, like I said, you don't do it during a council election cycle. And you, you know, we figure out, what do we want to know, are we interested, what feedback do we want? And then, you know, we sort of go that way, so, you know, we've done one since I've been here, you did two. Uh, because that is twenty twenty and.
Could then, could that survey be accommodated within what's exposed right now for that? That initiative?
Yeah, I think it could, I mean, obviously if there's a little extra money, sure, that's great, but again, we'll figure this out as we move forward, if I have a hundred thousand, I'll budget it, I'm a stickler.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Senator, we'll circle back on what, um. Vice Mayor, uh, maybe, uh, mentioned earlier about, um, the code enforcement, uh, being transferred back to. The, um, community development department, historically, um, the community. The the code enforcement being managed by the chief building official, um, generates revenue. And I could never see any revenue, um, under the community development department, uh, because. Um, this part of, of, in addition to, I'm sorry, in addition to what the code enforcement can generate. Um, on substandard, um, code enforcement, you know, violations, stop work notices. Um, I think we're, we're, um, practicing or implementing reinforcement more on those, um. Historically been done, uh, by our code enforcement officers. Um, I think what they are concentrating, uh, for the last two years was only the nuisances, um, based on. What, uh, Chief Ryan had, uh, presented in the last two years. And what they have been doing to, um, to mitigate all the, all the nuisances. Um, right now, we are not generating revenue, um, by our code enforcement department. Because, um, I don't think they are trained, I don't think they, uh, there was a policy. End phase when they were moved to, um, the police department. So I, I completely, um, support what, um, Vice Mayor Medina had mentioned about the transcript. I think we need to start implementing the reinforcement from substandard, I see in. Um, any code enforcement related when it comes to, um, building, building related enforcement. Um, I am going for Shu Li February on, for support of the name of San Bruno without. The, um, hiring of our enforcement supervisor. Because I believe that our new chief building official can manage the code enforcement. In that, and to that, I, I, I did a research back in two thousand seven, all the way back in two thousand seventeen. Um, C D D matrix, uh, was under code enforcement, was under. Um, chief building official, we two code enforcement officers, two permit divisions, and two building officials. Were only managed by our chief building official, by myself. Now we have two. High name executives that that can basically have the, uh, the code enforcement. Even if we keep the two code enforcement officers in P D. In, uh, in the police department and continue to do the nuisances, I think it's okay. But what we need, we are planning to hire these, uh, code enforcement supervisor. We are better of hiring code enforcement officers that we need to train under the, the chief building. That we teach you building officials. Also, um, I don't think we should move forward with the, um. The residential parking program assessment fee and spend the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think we are better of allocating the money towards the, um, street lighting. And move forward with, since we have a lot of street lights that need to be placed on all the ways. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? So, I. Enforcement versus a building division, you didn't mention, so it's a code enforcement, of course, maybe, uh, the building divisions, of course, with building.
Um.
We know that code enforcement makes money, to my knowledge, I don't know that they bring in revenue, and I don't know if. Yeah, but, you know, I don't think we have made money in the two years I've been, in the two plus years I've been the city manager here. Um, as code enforcement was P D, I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of anything. I'm just trying to think of my past when it did have code enforcement under, in different cities. I'm not aware of it actually making money per se, it's not, it's not, it's kind of. That tends to just cost the city a lot of money, but because you're doing the good work for the community, right? Cleaning something up, you're taking care of something, and you can recover costs, I, I, I don't disagree with that, but. Do you know if it did, that's the issue, right, you gotta catch some, so. Peter, do, do you, do you have any thoughts on this at a very high level? And then Susan, if you wanna, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Sir, some of my members of the council, uh. My experience, other cities where I, where saw code enforcement, it was not a moneymaker. Uh, it was. Uh. You can at times put leans on properties if you go all the way through the court system. Uh, but for every one of those, you'll have twenty five that doesn't get to that point, and it's, um. Not cost recovery, uh, I, I want to be clear, building inspectors do look for code compliance. So if there are, if there's work being done without permits, uh, there's, uh, illegal work discovered. Uh, they do look at that, uh, they do, uh. Uh, if necessary, they'll tag properties, although we'll only do it if it's, if it's health safety, we do let them know they need to have permits. Uh, and, and that might be where you're thinking about revenues, because when. Uh, and and that might be where you're thinking about revenues, because when you are found to do something without permits, you pay double fees. So that that happens. Uh, the time when. Uh, the building division will rely on code enforcement is when the owner ignores the building inspector. And then we we rely upon on on code enforcement to, uh, uh. Take it up a level, if you will. Uh, so, yeah, just in general, I don't necessarily see code enforcement. Uh, where it's located as being a a change in the budget or changing regulations. Also want to note, just for clarity, uh, the building official supervises four building inspectors. Uh. And because code enforcement is not about public code enforcement or even paying. The only code enforcement is about municipal code enforcement, which is much broader. Uh, if for some reason, uh, there was a a transfer. It would not be put under, it would probably be put under the administrative part of apartment. Uh, because it's not a building code, it's it's not just about the building code. Uh, but keeping his uh uh. Enforcement of building code violations is is happening. Uh, I don't believe it ever stopped. Uh, the partnership between building code enforcement occurs when uh the owner is not responsible. And uh. The double fees are charged when it is worked up without a permit, uh, so so that that is occurring.
Through the mayor, may I maybe. I'm sorry, did you want us to follow up first? Okay, okay, thank you, uh, through the mayor. So, um, code enforcement over the last several years. Has a structure in which, if you can look at the code enforcement of municipal codes being all of those from nuisance. We've had a lot of animal permits lately, a house with thirty five snakes which we're getting out. Um, yeah, fifty, thank you very much. We've had, you know, twelve chickens, and a lot of issues. Fall under code enforcement. Some of the benefit, I think, of having code enforcement under police is that we can be sort of the muscle. And we can do the criminal investigation part of it, and then coordinate, and I I want to commend, uh, really Peter and. Our city attorney Tricia, when she's here, in working a whole new structure and how we more effectively work with all of the departments. There's fire inspection, we've seen a lot of pop ups of food trucks, right? Who do you call for that? Code enforcement, we are sort of the overall catchall for all violations. And through that, we coordinate almost as the investigating entity, all of the different inspectors from the different departments. And what we're working on right now is this continued infrastructure around meeting every two weeks. With all of those different inspectors around the table, with our code enforcement city attorney. Where we raise those cases up that need the coordinated resources, but who relates more than one department? And those are the effective ways we're working together on code enforcement. But that structure has been somewhat missing, and I think that we are really working on a reset of it all right now. The benefit, I think, of having it in police is you get those criminal backgrounds. And to take those code enforcement inspectors out of police. To put them in any other department, you really don't have the benefit of sort of the coordinated orchestration. Of putting together cases that could work for city attorney or through one of the courts. So it could go either way, but I I think it would be a good structure once we get the infrastructure situated well. And right now, I think our code enforcement are working on three or four issues that are mostly building issues. Planning issues around uh food pop up restaurant with a structure and attempt and all of these things. We don't know that much about, but that's why we have them at the table. So I sort of advocate for keeping it, at least if we are going to do. The dumping and the investigations around that, ten of bad actors out there right now, and I think COVID has given a lot of people just sort of the. Whatever you want to do, and I think we're trying to get the city back in order a little bit.
So. The nuisance was created, I believe, six, six, uh, six years ago. We have our previous code enforcement, senior code enforcement officer that was added to his, um. His uh, uh, fiscal report or on the on the daily basis. Um, it wasn't handled by a code enforcement officer, any nuisances before, but it was created. Um, and we started implementing it in the building park. The process to begin the the code enforcement case is through a stop work notice by our rebuilding inspectors. And with that, the 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 stop work notice would be given ten days uh for. Uh, Alvin can for contractor that started construction work without a permit. Any substandard housing, any substandard of commercial building. Those are the priority of our code enforcement officers because we are enforcing uh life and safety. If a building is not, um, code code, if the building is substandard. Set aside the nuisance that, I I know it's important, but I think it's more important to implement. Um, safety of the building and code enforcement specializes. Uh, our previous code enforcement officers are trained, they go to series of trainings and. And cover training to uh identify what are substandard buildings. And through stop work notice of illegal constructions, those are our money generating. Um. Revenue in the department. You don't see, you don't see the the revenue from the code enforcement. Because the the fees, double fees, uh, triple fees, what we've never wanted, triple, triple fees, like we waste. Double fee, any illegal um construction. So the 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 money that was taken in, um, was split in the, under the building permit account. And so you see that, uh, but under a different permit, which is code enforcement permit. And that's how you can differentiate, you generate a report and see a couple of you, you will see all the money that the code enforcement permit would generate. And that will be our permit. Uh, as as when, um, Director Peter mentioned that we will generate revenue through our permits. As part of the special revenue plan. And code enforcement generates that. In the past, we have been generating because we are proactive in signing, um. Contractors that are doing good of the permit. I don't hear a lot of of enforcement on our illegal construction. I hear a lot of legal dumping, um, so we pay for 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 those to legally. Uh, we spend money on on legal dumpings to clean and. Again, nuisances, um, I am in favor of keeping the code enforcement that are specializing in nuisances. And the nuisances, but we are not implementing, um, substandard enforcement anymore. But illegal, illegal construction anymore. And 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 I think, um, the best. The best department to manage this is, uh, the the building, and a lot of jurisdictions, basically. Uh, we see the uh, the code enforcement handled in the community. Very seldom that you see them in the P D, but I think, um. I I know of order jurisdictions that basically have their, um, their code enforcement, like, you know, probably. Um, they have the code enforcement of their P D or other foreign companies out.
The spare of a can, really quick. So, my understanding is code enforcement was moved from community development to police department. In part because, again, what was shared with me, and I wasn't here, I did not work here at this time, was it wasn't working. At a backlog or caseload, that was very, very deep. And I remember when when I I joined the city, uh, Chief Johansson at the time was talking about how much they cleaned up the backlog and, or backlog, excuse me, the backlog and whatnot. And I get, I just showed him, said, sure, okay, with that story, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna argue with it. Um. I think where it works may not matter as much as is it being effective. And I will say that since Chief Manheimer has joined us, you know, she working with community development director, the management directors. Has made a huge difference, and we really focused on on, uh. Uh, so the some of the nuisance stuff, and and that's part of, you know, the dumping is a nuisance issue, that is not a building issue. And that's the stuff I think people see every single day, and again, over time, we start to tolerate it and say, well, that's just. That's just how that corner is. If you live across the street in that corner, you're probably really annoyed that your corner is the one that anybody gets them. I think our goal was, the original goal of the cleanup San San Bruno plan was a sustained effort. To stay on top of these these uh, these nuisance problems. Um, it was never meant to make money for the city, it was never viewed as a revenue generator of any sort. Um, it was about quality of life for the residents. A lot of what we do doesn't generate money. But it creates quality of life benefits for the residents. And I think, um. And we still advocate, again, where code enforcement lives, it probably should be a a a administrative decision. As long as it's working and it's effective. Moving it back to community development, I don't think community development, where it appears one way or the other, not much. The chief is 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 pointing out logic is quiet, might need to stay in P D. And I think I shared with a lead minute you were applying separately, I don't really have a dog in this mate, I mean, to me, it just needs to be effective. I don't care where it works, I just want to make sure it is working. Um, and I think, again, since Chief Manheimer has been here, really. Galvanizing the team out there, really getting them to start doing what doing work is. Is is having results, and and that's tremendous. I will say, code enforcement has. Or investment you make in code enforcement is more legal costs. We're spending a lot of money on legal costs right now in code enforcement because, you know, if the mayor doesn't do what we ask him to do, we take him to court. So now we're going to court on a number of these cases because people are like, oh my God, I've never done anything before, so. Now we are starting to put our money where our mouth are and say, no, we mean it, take care of this issue. So Tricia's firm is. Uh, rolled up their sleeves and doing great legal work on behalf of the city, but again, we start, we need to start making examples. Of those bad players in our community, so that we don't get up the neighbor who's living across the street from the others.
Good, this city manager and mayor, if I could just add one thing, um. This last cleanup we did at Seventh and Walnut over the, right by three eighty. There's there's some differences between the city and the state as to whose exact responsibility that is. And you know Vice Mayor very well, the community has been up in ours for very good reasons. When we actually got on the property last week, not only had the homeless there been setting fires. There was biohazard material, there was all kinds of other safety features, they were using as a latrine. I don't want to get into all the issues because all I will say is that forty seven thousand dollars later. That week, the Caltrans had repaired the fence, they had helped us figure out how we're gonna get some lighting and electrical. But they were very clear that they will, that's their budget for the year for San Fravell. They have nine cities in their reg- region, and that they are not going to be able to come in. And I'm not talking about going deep in to these encampments, I'm really talking about adjacent tour neighborhood there. And 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 I think those residents want and need more than that. So this effort around the cleanup is really to say, how do we do that without us? Incumboring forty seven thousand dollars every couple of weeks or months, because that is not sustainable. So the cleanup was really an idea as to how we as a city work with the state in a very aggressive, forward way. To get those partnerships working and hold accountability. And so I just wanted to add that little piece that. It would not be sustainable to have Caltrans continue that level of responsiveness that I know you all want to see for our residents and our neighbors. Particularly in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if my memory is correct, we used to have two code enforcement, knowing much with third. Code enforcement person, and that was because of the heavy caseload. And then there were a bunch of constraints, and so then it became two again. So i- in my mind, I think you have, uh, we have a new chief coming on. You've got the interim chief, who's seen it now, fresh perspective eyes from when former Johansson had it. So I I would think. The staff and the team should work with the city manager to figure where is most effective and efficient. And we get the best results. The metric that was brought up before is like, well, how many cases do you have? I remember three hundred, it's the number way back then. So I don't know. But, um, I I that's just my personal opinion. Um, I wanted to add. We talked about a survey, communication survey. Uh, and I know, you know, I don't think it's ringing any wheel too, when I was with the mayor and safety commissioner of Brisbane. I picked up, I picked up their city of Brisbane communication survey. They had started in February, March, and then May, and then we'll get the results, there's six different portions. But it's on the table, so it's not reevaluated. And so, and it's where do you get this information, et cetera. Taking more time with that, but at the same time, uh. Do we want to continue with the communications? Just trying to get us, because when we started bringing up all of a sudden initiatives. We had a meeting, we had five. So if we're wanting to withdraw, this is the time to tell the city manager. Um, of that, uh. Well, I'm hearing it is, I hear two for the facilities, maybe, why don't we just go down them? Um, we had plenty also for measure G that met. So, you know, some of it is being paid for. So the cleanup San Bruno, it's the one point four six million dollars, hotspot management, municipal code updates and house recovery. Uh, and that is also with the one point oh F T E. Code enforcement supervisors, are we still on board with that? Yes. Okay. So, so I'm sorry, but Miss Miss Mary didn't hear your, I apologize. We have three, uh, so I can understand. And and my personal opinion, let the professionals figure out, I understand where we're at each. Uh, we have the communications and engagement layer. Uh, which the, which I'm hearing. So, is that something still which I think City Manager said is survey probably need to work back? Yes?
Yes, yes. Okay, I just want to be clear on one thing. So, you know, this whole initiative is a thousand dollars, but I want to make sure it doesn't happen just. That we end up spending a good portion of it on survey, and then all the other good stuff without all the engagement doesn't happen. Just, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, we've been talking about doing this since I've been on council, and it's. It's always the first thing to go when things start, when things start to go go weird. So, um, I just want to make sure that that part of it happens, which is why I was advocating for finding money to. Add add the survey on top of whatever that was all the plan.
Well, I think that's a prime example that the city manager brought up. Mr. Adam was what he's doing now, which is audio visual budget, that wasn't where it was gonna be. Now, I understand it could be town, and it could fill a lot of holes, but there was the first one, also the hope or within the engagement.
Absolutely. So, uh, I mean, that's not gonna happen, it's just more of a focus thing rather than how we should be doing that.
So that, this ready, there's five votes, five yes votes for, it's. Phase two of the, uh, the R O. Do you want, I think that would hurt, so let's keep it on, and if something has to be pulled back, they're gonna do that.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's okay. Yes, residential, uh, residential, um, permit parking program reassess. You you want, uh, say. Uh, street, uh, sure, strategic, uh, on our city owned properties. Yes. Oh, yes.
Almost about, um, if I can, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Medina brought up the Fourth of July costs. The only reason this is really critical is Fourth of July is around the corner.
Well, um, councilmembers also started to talk about that. What is the level, right? I mean.
You know, there's, there's a, what it is 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 standoffs, right? A mayor can help save a little five, six thousand.
A mayor can help save a little five, six thousand, but it's not going to see us through. You know, do you not have the extra engine on? Well, maybe the time you don't and you leave it, you have our law enforcement personnel. That, I think they tried to treat it a little bit last year, I believe, if I'm correct. So I, I believe, and whoever made the comment earlier, I apologize in the late hour. One of you commented that, you know, given that we had the revenues, therefore we staffed up. And I think every police person was, was on, not on overtime, excuse me, every police officer had, every police employee had to work, whether they were on duty or not, they were brought in. And maybe all, Chief Joe Anderson used to joke about, I think it was his daughter's birthday, he worked a lot. He said, I missed it for seventeen years, I missed her birthday. And I think the point was, we dramatically staffed up for that day, or that evening, excuse me. And, you know, when working with Chief Manheimer and incoming Chief Athena, I think we may be able to come up with a plan to figure out what is the right level of staffing, given that suddenly the resources are under.
The catch twenty-two on this is going to be if something goes awry, this is where we're all going to point to me and the chief. And, you know, we need to share in this decision equally. And we will come back to you in two weeks with an answer to this. If that's the direction you want to go with regards to, it's costing us eighty thousand right now, we can start to shrink that down. It's still going to cost us money. The question is maybe not as much, I mean, that's what I'm hearing as the goal.
Maybe a commentary, maybe more, I like the idea of taking within the program and trying to rightsize it. From a, from a police standpoint, yeah, I don't think we need to have the entirety of police force on duty that day. We may want to consider not pulling back the fire part, because there is a certain cost, a lot of danger, a little extra danger of fire. So this.
We'll work, and that's chief delay as well, obviously, to make sure, we're going to make the city safe. The question is, at what cost and at what part of the job? And we can, we can address that separately, but we will come back in two weeks with an answer to that question.
And I've said this before, but the, and I know that the, the mailer is not all expensive, but it is absolutely. There are people who are going to blow up things who are not reading newsletters. Even the mailers, they can bring out very sensitive. So I'll find out where that status of that is right now, so. Okay, some other items were brought up were street poles, right? The number of street poles that needed to be.
Yeah, so that was when we were talking how whether we should be doing the streetlights, but I mean, at some point, you know, there's, there's a lot of street poles that were identified to get replaced, and at some point, you know, they only get worse with time, right? Streets under eighty were identified for replacement in twenty twenty. Through the mayor, the only thing that doesn't get worse is the crime of wanting, yes, the streetlights. You get worse with time. Yeah, streetlight poles. I think one of the, one of the misnumbers is we looked at a project and there's thirty seven streetlight poles replaced. We're not accounting for all the R O streetlights that we did replace that also happened. And so keep in mind, there are a hundred fifty poles there as well. Right? And so although there might not have been a city dedicated project for that, that's where we're doing a lot of the replacements of those poles, because I believe in the report was in those neighborhoods where we had those old poles. So we could probably provide a dated number through council digest, just so we have an accurate string of what those poles are. They are and were being replaced over a period of time. They just were not being done as a quote unquote C I P. Because operationally, it looked like commitment staff could replace them on a as needed basis. But we can look into the desires to having dedicated C I Ps for the streetlights. We can do that. I think one of the challenges we have at C I P. And, you know, anytime I get to stand on myself last night, I do. Every C I P requires a project manager. The amount of work that a project manager does for any C I P, regardless of the project size, in terms of cost, is pretty much a significant amount, the same amount of money. Right? Because it's administrative and such, you have to process. So that's usually what the challenge is. So what the Public Works Department really tries to do is try to figure out ways in which we can deliver infrastructure improvements that does not necessarily fall within the C I P book. That's what we were trying to do with the, with the light poles themselves, because I recognize when I first came on board, the person that was managing the light, a pole replacement project, was the public works director, which is really odd. Right? Because they should be running the department and not managing little, little projects like. And so that's, that's just because of the resources and challenges that we have. And so I think over the past course of a couple of years, we've been looking at ways to make those infrastructure improvements through different avenues.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because I thought that was a fun way. And it's great that hopefully a hundred and forty-four poles that plays for streetlights, but that's probably not the vehicle. You're going to have to get back to it, look into it. And we're talking about it, and can look of another way to respond to it, and if staff, existing staff, could do it, I don't know, you guys be grounded, whenever you can, just you have the budget for it. Right? You know, if you don't have the budget for it, but it's a staff, right? So, yeah.
I think one of our, should also consider is trying to research, right? I think our city, or sorry, our principal engineer, Donna Miles, she talks about statistics. It's not just the funding that kind of becomes a limiting factor. I know that that's typically been the case in the past. We're just fortunate enough that we're able to invest in, in certain, in certain efforts. And sometimes we get a little bit of our research to do, and so that's where the C I P and putting, putting resource, funding resources towards the C I P becomes a challenge. We don't have to turn out a lot of managers, but we are, or things that we do that burn off of the C I P track and with infrastructure improvements we try to figure out.
Light there, sidewalk repair, can I?
Uh, yeah, sidewalk repair, just a friendly minor council. The reason why the sidewalk repair program was paused is because we had to celebrate the paving. Over the past course of a couple of years. And so, again, the project managers, they can only do a certain amount of projects. And so we're shifting priorities from project managers from one project to another. We have to pause something. It's, it's really hard, just like our council initiatives, that a project manager work on multiple projects and then nothing gets done. And so that's why that project was paused. I think we are coming back to council in the next couple of months to talk about rebound sidewalk program, which we think we can eliminate trip hazards at a larger clip. And if we enact what's in our municipal fund for collection, we may be able to continually fund that project in perpetuity, right? And so then we don't have to invest from the general fund as much.
Okay, thank you. Police radios came up, and I think it was just an update, maybe that can be put into the digest.
Yeah, so we should be, that's why I just wish, wish Chief, and she, she said we can bring this back in two weeks, of course. She won't be here in two weeks, so the new chief will have to come back to you all and explain the new radio.
We just have a commitment to the chief, so the meeting's almost. I, I promised him that I'd do this, and yet, this is the budget, this is the point.
No, we can feel, I'll be back and update that.
Either through the digest process or the twenty-four, so you see it again.
There was also planting trees and speed.
Yes. We have trees and we have speed up towards the rush.
Just to, why I don't know. Like how possibly, you can't back resources when we have to manage. But, you know. How many were, we can, let's deal with that then, right? But I'd like to see a project at some point where we, you know, identify a street that like is missing its street trees. And there, there, they, there are trees on the east side of town where trees are not there. And it's like getting together a project of like, hey, and I know our, let's put trees in, because I've seen them do it. And I, and I think that's great, which is like, you know, you have a lot to do in the middle of the city.
If I may, I just told the, council member Hamilton took and who are this district. What was the last question I asked, as we were driving? I said, where, why are there no street trees up here? It's a city wipe. And it may be worse, it's more on the east side, you said, so.
Well, I, good man, I have a, I have a, one suggestion there. Might be as part of our communications and engagement, we advertise street tree program. Because, and you know, a lot of people don't realize, if you call the city, you might get a free tree in your yard. You can ask for one. I asked for one and I have one, and it worked out great. So, I mean, that's, that seems like a fairly low effect. Way of doing it, but I do, I do agree, you know, in, in the, in the east side of town. It's especially that a lot of trees have been removed in place. We do need to address that.
I think, I guarantee I think it was on the list. Yes, V Dums.
Is there a specific line item in the budget for, for traffic, probably the traffic, right? So how much, we have the appropriate amount of money to track.
I thought you said, I don't know why I put set aside fifty thousand dollars a year for traffic calming and animal pets, let them move quickly, or maybe, oh, also work structure.
The projects, I believe there's this, yeah, the project that is titled, well, writers, bigger tooth, one nineteen. That's all, it's never run, I guess. So you can track the problem, so when here's this is studies. I knew that it was two thousand seven. This is the, this is the C I P project in which we utilize funding based on the recommendations from the T S B C to implement traffic calming. Also, on page two one nine, St. John's School, like, where they convinced that, and which you did the St. John's School program. Here's that, I think, working on, celebrity funding spheres by the grant. So those are kind of two programs that you utilize for, in what you're describing as kind of the, the kind of.
There, so on page two twenty-seven, there is the twenty-five, twenty-six, so basically, there was a twenty-four, twenty-five, six twenty-five, and four hundred and six thousand as are the estimated actuals. So there's only one, two, two hundred thousand in that. It's all we did last year, we're not going to go do as much. We're doing half, right? So just wanted to bring that up because, you know, I think our community, I mean, what I hear often is, is, is the amount of speeding that went around. However, people, people just beat nowadays, it's different. They don't like to stop it. Stop signs, and I'm hoping to keep my edge out, like, as you get older, you notice some of the stuff beating and loud music and, you know, certainly today, it's, it's worse. But, so that's true, we all agree, it's already eleven o'clock. But anyhow, so just wanted to bring that in there, maybe of the, of the money that we cut out of the residential partners, we're going to go back to you, and to later, or you asked us, right, and you're going to cut, right, you're going to ask, or this is, this is, yes, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say that, correctly, if I'm wrong, if I misunderstood earlier, that we get to add one item. I'm thinking we can add under the, the light, the streetlights, to add the downtown, streetlights that are broken as well, some of the downtown, downtown.
And you turned in the parking, I'm going to be one's correct.
Yes, thank you.
And this might be only for Ben and later, but I brought it to the city manager before about investing something, and I don't know if that's something that is put into, I have a Mary Pram, a lot of us, South City Chamber, I don't know, Davy City. And she has an idea and wants to work, and it might be not recreating our own, but join with that, maybe this, I don't want to call it by any voice, but something like a D V or some. Make sure as you want some of this, some of that, that's what they could offer. But I don't, it's very, you know, I don't have what a dollar to be. I wanted to throw that out there, that's, you know, I have your own city machine. Anybody else have anything else? You're going to go, time would be short for that, we're using specials. You're looking for, looking for a concurrence, you know, maybe, maybe, because obviously this is not necessarily, this time, I don't think we all have one for you to begin with.
Right, yes, time is the night.
Sure, exactly. But it's not the, but maybe looking at, maybe at least spending some, spending a little bit of effort this year to look at what that might look like for something that would amend next year, or you can amend that.
Or, or, here, I'm sorry. Or, we can, a couple of things, because it's one of these things where we're just going to keep coming back. So do we just set the money aside now in the budget? You don't spend it. They set it aside at, say, fifty thousand dollars for future yet to be determined downtown chamber, chamber of commerce type event. It's not creating chambers per se, right? To be clear, it's not creating a chamber of commerce, it's more having a chamber of commerce type activity in the downtown. If you set that money aside, you decide to, you keep saying, I, it's for the whole city wipe, I apologize, city wipe, I'm sorry. We can certainly do that. And if I can go back, council member Oliver has this question about the lights in the parking lot downtown as well. So that's why I got second downtown. We can get a vote on that as well to figure out whether we include it or not include it. It'll just help keep this thing streaming, understood?
So I would propose that we use fifty thousand of the money that we, that we save from the department to be cheap to, uh, uh, chamber of commerce type, type of events to be determined later. Activities, I think, activity. On private. And then there was also, you know, street, the lights that are parking cars. Yeah, but I was supportive. As a private project for fifty thousand. Has a council winner, three thousand.
So go back to the. I actually, I ran it tonight, so let's get this done, so we don't have to keep, keep doing this. You can set aside fifty thousand dollars in the budget or a lighting installation, a light replacements in, in one or more of the parking lots in the downtown. And if it only buys us three lights, it only buys us three lights. In other words, if you start, to use your word, Vice Mayor Medina, you know, on private, and it's getting more light in, it's the most downtown parking lots, maybe that brings more light.
I think they've been more.
And then if we, I know it's minute, but just diamond two lights, remember, speaker. So I think Travis is diamond two.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Question, we do have a stamping project. We had it in our budget last year for diamond three, we went up for big, we had a pair of sub project. So we're going to be rebuilding that project, but it does include diamond two. I believe the individuals asking for lights out of diamond two are asking for a light project along the path that if we don't have any lights that are out there, there's no infrastructure for lights there. We're going to do a project there, have to be a, it would have to be a path project. We could accomplish that. It would have to be a path project, um, we could accomplish that with solar lighting. However, what were our initial estimates on that, that I shared with the city manager was that that project would be fifty thousand dollars. If we did the bare minimum to give light and crop along the pathway.
Yeah, this is the new number. Anything else, the city manager? So. What he just said was any yes, was a no, but what, what, what just transpired? We told a story, he told us there, you did, correct? Thank you, Travis. And I think he said he needs fifty thousand more dollars if we want a light, because I think diamond two, I think he's right, it's not about diamond two, it was about pathway, yeah. This is a very different. So I think the, the, the person who testified and funded you was talking about the safety, you know, safety that died. So it's not on diamond two, it's halfway around it, for now.
I think it's important to do it, I just don't know if I can find a funds for it, we can find, if we can find a funds for it, I mean, you know. If I was, we're moving.
Hey, we go this way a little more times, or just okay, we're, we're gonna do that, right, so. I would, can, can we, can we ask they can. Try, try to find it, then they can bring that back to us? If, if the answers for five of you or three of you is saying yes to try, we'll sort of see if we can find.
Well, seeing what, what. That is the right amount of lighting, I mean, like. At night at parks. You can light every park. Right, so, so kind of make sure it meets the needs and there's residents right in the back, right there, so. Uh, I don't know how many lights fifty thousand is gonna get you, but, you know, they're lower level. But it'd be nice to see some way that could be accommodated. Since fifty thousand is right there.
So may I add, add one more, one more comment, um, so. You know, you're going to always have individuals who feel that their individual needs are between that in a certain area. If you were to come back to ask staff or ask our patrons here at the uh center. I think a more crucial area to light would be the area between our facility and the pool parking lot. Which we don't have funding for as well. Um, so if you, you know, if you're really looking at from an overall needs, that's probably more crucial than half on the back.
So, from my aspect. Send it to the thousands. Then they'll, they'll call them again, it costs me fifty thousand, you're just hard, so it's easier like her.
I would suggest them doing the law optional, yeah, it's wrong, and that is.
I agree, I parked over there today, but in general, um, you know, wherever people need to go, they, parking lots, and, you know, maybe some. Less lights, maybe one, I, I don't know, I haven't been back and behind and got to a night to see who's really walking there and. Uh, how dark is it there, but. Yeah.
We can take a field trip, right?
But, you know, seeing about putting. Some light out there possibly, but I don't know the whole.
And uh, with that, we have more items, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we, as you know, it's past ten thirty. Because we were still on the same item, I make, make a motion that we, in the meeting, have a talk. Through, maybe to the. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so council committee reporter, first one, Mr. Mr. Hamilton, is there?
Yes, um, I'll go fast, you know, but I, I have three, but I pushed it since last one, so I have to, so I have to go, so, um. Uh, so I have two report outs from the Airport Land Use Committee, uh, on April twenty-fourth, we. Approved, um, two large affordable housing, um, all affordable housing developments in Belmont. One for sixty-five minutes, one for sixty-three minutes, um. So the, I'm looking forward to being, you know, be like, build a lot of stage for around the year twenty twenty-five. Um, and then on May twenty-second, we approved a large seven building life sciences campus in South City. Um. Approved, Genentech is expanding their campus masterland by eighteen more acres, not building any, you know, they're. Getting ready to, they'll be ready for future expansions. Um, to their, to their large campus in South City. And we received a report from, um, S F O of their long range development plans for, um. Uh, additional runway expansions, if you're, if you're expanding, they want to expand their terminals, their facilities. Uh, for future, for, seventy-one in the year, for a year, which is what the runways could take, it was now incredible. As big as it ever got. Um, and then on May fifteenth, um, we had our, uh, the. House committee, the area water supply and conservation agency. Uh, system storage is ninety-six point nine percent maximum, we got plenty of water. We voted to improve our fiscal year twenty-five budget. Twenty-five, twenty, or twenty-six, twenty-seven work plan. Those operating budget, um, and which is. Going to be a two point three percent assessment increase to the member, member agencies, could say. Um, which is significantly less, last year we raised it nine percent, so that means our annual assessment for Bowster. Rise from the current seventy-four thousand to seventy-six thousand. Next just for the year. Um, we approved all of our annual, uh, our annual renewal over consulting contracts, they're all repeats. Uh, repeat vendors, um, and, uh. It's kind of skipping something, then we have a planning session on our, uh. Um, strategy twenty fifty program, which is to provide a comprehensive picture of the region's supply and. Uh, management needs and options, the broad themes of the various risks that we've identified, our. Supply availability in the face of climate change, regional development. Population, jobs, and housing, and water rates and affordability, so this is where to be focused on as a strategy.
Yes, uh, quickly for the hour, um, so I wanted to report out that, um. I attended the, uh, Chamber San Antonio County Progress Seminar, also the mayor attended, also. Councilman Hamilton attended, I believe our city manager attended, um. Fifty-six annual event, um, they have a number of different great speakers there talking about the impact of national political party, personal. Personality changes, local impact, climate change, public private sector strategies. Changing economic conditions, the importance of local hospitality and tourist, uh, tourism. The vulnerabilities of local healthcare system and, uh. Additional motivation, so it's a very, uh, powerful event, just want to make sure we get that out. And then, and then, uh, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just, uh, move on to comments from council members, I'm gonna throw everything in there.
So I just want to take, take a moment, since this is, um, Chief Dan Hyrum's last meeting, to thank, thank our chief, who serves the rest of the. Really wonderful having you here and, uh, really appreciate you stepping in, and, uh, we look forward to welcoming our new chief. Who made it all the way through here to the end, and every one of our names, this is one of the earlier ones, we usually end like a three, so just excuse that. Anyway, so, uh, thank you very, very much, and I'm.
And let's go where I should have gone to item A, council member Alvarez. Discuss reagendising consideration of the option of the resolution of ending rates and regulations for paid parking on city owned. Or control, control on and off-street parking facilities. Two events, let's pull up.
Thank you, Sumayor, uh, my first, I like to apologize to my colleagues and staff for my option of absence last, uh, constipated due to. Due to a illness, um, this line item would have been, in my opinion, uh. Passed, uh, in my additional, um. Vote, um, I understand that, um, a discussion was made and, um, staff. Had, uh, presented, um, some information about the, uh, the two items, um, on my request. To include a fifty cents rate for off-street parking lot spaces, if using coins and including pass. Through or transaction fee for credit card payment, and the other one is to remove gay parking on Alcavera Real. Remove the associated twenty-one kiosks and keep the two-hour parking limit. Um, so if I may, and there is no, um, discussion that it needs to take place. I would like to, uh, move. To, uh, approve, agendaizing.
Can I ask just a great way of clarifying my sheet? So on, on number one, where it says include fifty cent rate for all straight parts in hot states, using coins, getting passed through a transaction fee for credit card payment. For that transaction type of.
Yes.
Yeah, just want to make sure that that's clear, because it would be that is, so we're adding that to all of the. Probably make sure that, I mean. Only discussing, no, I mean, say that was a form of motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'm not trying to question.
I was going to make a motion.
You did. Made a motion.
I was going to make the motion, um, to agendaize this in our council, meeting next council meeting under consent.
Well, my understanding of bringing it out of that or having that agenda is, 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 we would, probably wouldn't put on consent and put it on. Contact the business, and it may not be at the next meeting, it'll be at the next meeting where the agenda can accommodate, can accommodate yet. So it may be on the twenty-fourth, maybe on the eighth of July, it may be on that. Whatever the city meeting requires, but we'll, we'll, we'll work on an agenda since possible.
Thank you.
Any questions or feedback? Motion second, and all those in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, we don't know. So three, two, descending, so, putting yourself. So, uh. Aside from, uh, I'll try to make it quick, but, uh, capuchin, I have a graduation, which I was at, which was, uh. Was extremely warm, um, but very aspiring. And, uh, just to make Nick and Alex feel better around the air. Bay Area Quality District, uh, they have twenty-four people on the board, and we went over the budget last week. So, it could be worse, uh, there's only five of us. Um, the A O S G P A also approved their budget, but the dispatching element is still up in the air, which could be conditional cost. They're not in the budget at this time. I also wanted to thank that, uh, Juneteenth, uh, we've all, it was a nice event. It was really nice with, uh, sharing with Millbrae, and, um, there's thought of maybe sharing another event together with both cities. Um, in Millbrae, but that's, uh, early. Also, some good news is that at the last transportation authority meeting. The district that I serve on, as you may remember, I asked for the item for fair games to be brought up, uh, quicker. And the staff was able to do it, it ended on the thirtieth, they had it to us on the fifth, and the, uh. Transportation Authority unanimously approved the fair gates of the ten point three million dollars. So it is all paid for, Daily Cities are in because of the fact they did the M U. Colma are in because it is an incorporated territory station. That has, so that just leaves a few of us left, but I wanted that to be known, so, uh, I spoke to Michael Jones today, he's. My second charger, to thank him for another item. We also received four million dollars for to continue the Huntington Bike and Pet Project. So in essence, uh, between the two grants, they paid for the, uh. Transportation joints, almost paid for most of it, all of it. Uh, but the reason I wanted to thank Mr. Jones is because, um, and I went to see, uh, in Mass Department on Friday to, uh. Thank for the application that was put in, but it was the first and last mile. And so Bart was the person, and so the city, we reached out to them and they. Agreed to sign on, and they not, we would have not been able to apply, nor had an opportunity to be awarded four million dollars. So, I, that's the way we want to end the meeting, but, uh, we've got some grant money coming through. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock, we adjourn. Thank you, staff, for staying.